Gentlemen, like college meeting to order today and welcome everybody here for our November the ninth, two thousand twenty-three board meeting. Welcome everybody here in the courtroom and anybody that's in the virtual world today. Our first item on our agenda is the invocation. And Pastor Lee Farmer, would you be so kind, sir?
Thank you for the opportunity. Don't forget our prayer on your behalf.
Thank you.
Gracious God, thank you for the blessings and the opportunities with the wonderful community. Thank you for our board supervisors who are here to conduct our business, guide their thoughts and actions tonight, Father. And as we look around the world, we ask for peace and for hearts to be softened so that peace might happen, especially during this season. Guide us through prayer in your name. Amen.
Pastor Farmer, would you be so kind to lead us in the pledge of allegiance too?
My pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Let's have a moment of silence.
You want to have a moment of silence?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're going to have a moment of silence here. Mr. Long has requested a moment of silence for my month. Thank y'all folks very much. Let's see. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Do I have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one addition. We have the closed meeting for two point two thirty-seven eleven A one, which is the personnel matter, but also need two point two thirty-seven eleven A three, which includes discussion of potential acquisition or disposition of real property.
Okay. Any other board member, I mean, any board member have any additions or changes?
I would like to take a look at the timeline for the public hearings for tonight.
All right. What would you like to do, Mr. Brand?
I think we're going to have a couple that's going to take some time. And the one for the slaughterhouse and for the solar, I'd like to put those at the end and move the other two up. I think those two are going to take some time.
We got one tonight that's been tabled and that's the application for the campground that's been tabled.
Yes.
So we can move up the conditional use, the conditional use permit for the solar up and then the conditional use permit for the vacation rental.
Yes.
In that order or whichever order you want.
Yes, vacation rental first.
All right.
Then we can do the solar, then we can...
Then the slaughterhouse afterwards.
Yes.
CBC.
I was, in addition to that, I would recommend moving the closed session to the end of the evening.
All right, closed meeting is already at the end of our public hearing. Sorry. Anything else? Somebody need changing? All right. Do I have a motion to that?
Yeah, I move that we approve the general with the conditions or with the added conditions.
All right, with the changes and everything. All right. I'd have a second on that?
A second.
All right, I got a motion second. Can you have a discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, our next item would be the approval of the minutes and that would be October twelfth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Are there any changes to those minutes or any corrections, anything? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second. All right, got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next would be our presentations. First on the list would be an update from Northumberland County Schools. Dr. Walgar? And can everybody hear us tonight? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Mr. Haney, I'm so sorry to hear about the loss of your mother.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you very much.
You'll be in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
You and your family. There are three different presentations this evening. First, I'll start with just some weekly highlights on, then I'll have, I'll turn this over to Mr. Jeff Brand, who will be speaking to you about the boilers at the Northumberland Elementary School. And then Mrs. Booth is here for a finance update. So if you look at the weekly message, I'm just going to go over the new items in the message on pages two. On page two, you can see that NHS started something new. They're having club days and are, on page two, you can see pictures of the NHS Cooking Club. And this, I believe tomorrow, you will also see that we have NHS students during club time, they're going to the elementary school to read to the elementary students. So that's very nice. On pages two and three are middle school students, specifically sixth grade, visited the Reedville Fisherman's Museum. It was a great time for them. At the elementary school on pages three and four, the elementary students learned about digital citizenship. And we did start our all-in tutoring program this week, so we're excited about that. We were approved with a plan with the Department of Education. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Jeff Brand for the information on the boilers.
Good evening. I appreciate y'all letting me talk on behalf of NHS Elementary School with their heating system. I assume maybe y'all have seen, or some of y'all have seen, the pictures of the damage to the particular boiler in question. Each of these boilers right now are at a twenty-eight year service life. What we had was the refractory liner and one of the boilers had failed, causing significant heat damage to the outer shell of the boiler, rendering it inoperable. We do have the other one online, however, it's aging and showing symptoms of the same effects as the other one. But what we tried to do is try to get a new refractory insulation liner put in this week with a company out of Roanoke. We had to put a stop to the work because we found that the damage that was caused from the refractory failure had caused weld failures and damage to where the shell plate was welded to the pressure tubes and pressure plate assembly inside of the boiler. It would require significant welds that would require certification and inspection, which was increasing the cost of repairs twofold. We were at seventy-five hundred dollars in the repair when it was all said and done. They were estimating around twenty thousand dollars in repair costs for this boiler. So we also found that there had been two ruptures prior in the past that had been welded on this pressure side, and we think the root cause of the refractory failure inside from inspection is due to poor welds at those pressure tubes, causing steam and water to hit the refractory liner, making it brittle and to fail, and then causing the outer heat damage. So at this point, with the damage and the extent that's in it, the company along with my department feel that it's urgent that we go ahead and do a replacement with a new system. We actually recommend going to a propane condensing system as opposed to going back to an oil-fired boiler system. I do have two quotes. Each quote is actually within two hundred dollars of themselves from two different companies for the same style propane condensing units. Each one is that one million BTU, which is just shy of the one point two million that the old oil-fired burners were rated at. And I have Noblet coming out to ensure that our onsite propane system is ready to go if, in fact, we do upgrade to a propane system. And some other key factors in it, if we did change to this, our aging underground fuel tank, we can abandon that because there'll be no use for that anymore, as well as our failing smokestack system that's been having issues with leaks and deterioration over the years going through the roof.
All right, would it be the removal of the existing fuel tank or you're just going to leave it there?
No, we would evacuate all the diesel fuel out of it, probably donate it to the transportation facility down there for the bus shop. It holds around seventy-five hundred gallons of fuel. Right now, she's at eighty-five percent capacity. We could utilize that for the buses and other vehicles or generators. And the smokestack actually would stay in place as a chase for the new CPVC exhaust system that is only required for the boilers. So we would utilize that to go out. It is still a double-walled system and the two stacks that would come out from these condensing units would be routed through them. And it seems, you know, what I'm finding out with this to be kind of common practice when they upgrade to these, instead of trying to put two new appendages through the roof, which we would not like to do being as we have the new roof system on there if possible.
Yeah, you already got one penetration there, so what's used to, what's used to make two more where you can utilize that one? Your efficiency rating or your AFUE rating on the equipment?
Yeah, I have all that written here. And forgive me for my knowledge base on how that works, but as far as efficiency rating, they downgraded to two one million BTUs because of how these systems work. And I really can't give an explanation of the difference between the oil-fired and the propane. It's kind of out of my wheelhouse on that. But if there's anything in particular, I can reach out to these guys and they even told me I could call tonight if there's particulars that we needed.
All right. Yeah, differences amount of BTUs per gallon?
Correct.
You're looking at a little over ninety thousand for propane. You're looking, and you're looking at a hundred and forty thousand for fuel oil.
For fuel oil.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And doing the math and working with these companies, they said the only upgrade we would need to do is put another one thousand gallon propane tank onsite. It would be school-owned, but we have right now an inch and a half black iron line system running to our regulator, Noblet. Until they get onsite, they don't want to say they think that it would work, but it looks like it will work because the only thing it's feeding now is our on-demand hot water system for the school. And it really doesn't have a very big demand other than during lunchtime. So they're thinking that if we put a second tank on there, it'd be more than suffice to keep these systems going throughout the winter months.
Okay. All right. This condensing furnace has got to be more than ninety-two percent efficient.
Yes, sir.
So...
Yeah. Now, they, they've said on several occasions, talking about ninety-two percent line efficiency and things like that, that they were talking about that, their concerns, which really aren't concerns, is each company has stated that with the boiler that's currently running right now, they can leave it online, put one condensing unit on the skid, get it running, and then they can take the old one offline. They're preferring to take it out and demolish it during Christmas months while we have the other, that one propane condensing unit online, and then over the holiday, get the second one online. So we're paralleled if need be, especially before January, February comes and we probably need them both.
That'd be a perfect time to do it.
Yes, sir.
Since you got one that's operational, install a new and then just switch them out. That's your final switch.
Yes, sir. And we have pulled the burner unit apart, the electrodes, the burners, the gallons per hour, everything is spot on there. My biggest concern is my boiler tubes on the inside and the deterioration of the refractory insulation on the inside of it. It has been changed before, but I think the reason it has held up is because we don't have any steam issues or leaks inside of the unit right at the moment. So I'm trying to keep it that way.
Yeah, knocked on a couple times.
Yes, sir. But I have two quotes now, and I'm going to forward these to the county administrators for everybody's review. And they were each around, one of them was one hundred seventy-four, six ninety-four, and the other one was one seventy-four, one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight ninety-four. And it was for the same lock and bar condensing units.
Okay.
And the one last thing I'll say is due to our Asian pipe and system going to all of our fan boxes throughout the building, these actually come with new variable frequency drive recirculation pumps that can bring down the pressure. We're not keeping the system at a constant pressure, being aged as it is. It only brings the pressure up as needed on demand.
Yeah, those variable drives are, they're sweet.
They're wonderful.
They are. They really are.
Yeah.
And use a heck of a lot less electricity.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Any board members have any questions?
I don't have any.
All right. These are original boilers to when this school was first built, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Their cast was in actually ninety-five.
And what is the useful life of one of those boilers?
Well, I've gotten conflicting reports. I've heard some people say they've gotten up to thirty years and that is optimal maintenance over the years. Each of these companies here stated these are a fifteen-year boiler. And Mr. Haney, I think with that, some boilers run forty, fifty years, but with the thickness of the outer shell on these, I would never do that with these. They're not residential, they are commercial, but on high-pressure steam, it's too dangerous.
But we were getting, we were at, outside of the ones that can go forever, you never know those, so it really passed the useful life and now where we're, where are we are.
Yes, sir.
You know what I've said about plans? It's all out of word. We got stuff that's aging out, we've got a plan to replace it. And that's not just school system, that's the county level too. I mean, we've got a plan, a useful life, and plan to replace it so we don't get caught with our heat down.
Yeah, for the past four years, I have submitted a CIP for this particular thing.
Never got to the board anyway.
All right, got anything else, Tom?
The only question is, these are quotes, but this is a public procurement, this will have to be put out on bid.
Yes, sir.
And if we're going to do that, then that's, I don't think you'd hit your Christmas time.
Well, I have told these folks, I said in the event that an RFP has to go in place, they are understanding and they're willing to work with us on the timeframe.
No, this won't be an RFP, this will be a bid. There's a big difference.
Okay.
At least in our side of the table, a bid, RFP is when you're requesting for proposals and then you interview, it's basically a negotiation. We have to do a bid and the low bid wins unless they're unable to perform.
Yes, sir.
So unless there's some emergency scenario, which this is, whatever, but unless our county attorney can say it meets an emergency that we have to do something, it's going to have to go to full bid. Because clearly exceeds our, any level of contracting we can do independent bidding. So unless you can find a loophole.
What's the turnaround time on shipment?
Forty-eight hours with one company.
Failure to plan, I don't think so.
And the other company has both of them on site. The one company has the two boilers for, I believe it's called Mills Garden, is a school up short pump. They were scheduled to get theirs in January. Because these units are readily available and it seems to be what a lot of facilities are using, they were just going to reorder for that project and utilize these for ours.
Okay.
But Lock and Bar stated they could have them in Richmond within forty-eight hours.
Much better than, much better than it was.
And the oil-fired burners, the company is Brian, is the boiler company. Due to the lack of demand for them, they had to be fabricated, and they were talking about a six-month timeframe for the oil-fired setups. Oh, and the last thing, these are back net capable, so they will go into our upgraded control system plug and play. So we would have multi-point visual on all diagnostics of these new units. And that's really all I have right now, sir.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Next, we have Mrs. Booth with a finance update.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Excuse me. Last month, Mr. Tomlin had asked for an update on some of our federal funds. And so instead of reinventing the wheel, I printed off a report for you that comes straight off of Omega, which is our online management of education grant awards. It shows you everything that's been active for the last year and that's currently active. So if you look at the first page, you'll see at the top, the very first section there is on Title Four. And if you look at description, it tells you that it's Title Four, and then the next column says the start date, so when we were able to begin spending those funds. And then the next column is the end date. And then in the next final column, it has the funds that are currently available. So for Title Four, you'll see that all of the funds had an end date of nine thirty twenty-three. That first one has a zero, it has been completely reimbursed. The second one down, those funds have a two-year period that just started in July. The next one is a two-year period that started last July, and then the bottom one ended in nine thirty twenty-three. That has all been spent, the reimbursements have been submitted, and we're waiting for those funds to be reimbursed. On the next section is Title Five. The first start date was twenty twenty and ended in twenty-three. That has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. The second one started this July and goes until twenty twenty-five. That has the thirty-seven to sixty-six, sixty-eight. The third one down started in July a year ago and ends next September. That still has twenty-six thousand. And then the last one there, the funds were available in twenty-one until September of twenty-three, and that has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. The following section is on Perkins Title One. This is spent strictly through the high school and CTE programs. Last year, currently, the one that we just got has thirty-two thousand, five twenty-eight for this school year. Last year's had, has two thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents left that has been spent and has been submitted for reimbursement. And the previous year, there was one hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents left, and the one that ended last year was already completed. In the last one at the bottom, the Title Two Part A, the award that began this summer, we still have the sixty-two thousand, we have two years for that. The award that started in twenty twenty and ended in Sep, this September, has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. The fund that started last year in twenty twenty-two has thirteen thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars left. On the next page, the fund that was from twenty-one until twenty-three has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. And it goes to Title One. I can go through all of these or I can, if you'd like for me to, or if you just want to look at it, that's fine. Do you have a preference?
It's a pleasure, board. What was that, Mr. Long?
Me to go through it? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Let's go through them.
Under Title One, you can see that the first award was, started this summer, twenty-three, and that goes until twenty-five. There's four hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and fourteen cents. The award that was from twenty twenty and ended in twenty-three has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. The award that started last summer and goes until next September has a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars left. And the award that was given in twenty-one and ended in twenty-three has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. The Esser Two started in March of twenty twenty. The end date was September thirtieth of twenty-three and has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. The ARP Esser Three, the division allocations, we started in March of twenty twenty and we have until next September. There's six hundred eighty-six thousand dollars left. Some of that has been spent, some of it has been encumbered. We are finishing some work on JROTC STEM building to get that up and ready for students. The educator recruitment deal, there is twenty-five thousand dollars left in that fund. We have until next September. The mentor teacher Esser funding, hundred and ninety-eight dollars left, we have until next September. And the ripe award that we have until next year has been completely spent and completely reimbursed. Under IDEA, the funds for twenty twenty-three that began in twenty-one have been spent and reimbursed. There's still seven, seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars left in the fund that goes until twenty twenty-five, and the next two funds have been completely spent and completely reimbursed. Under IDEA six eleven, the fund that ended twenty-three that started in twenty twenty-one has been completely spent and reimbursed. The fund that started this July and we have until September twenty-five still has three hundred, twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars. And the last two funds there have been completely spent and completely reimbursed. The top of the next page, we have Esser Three Summer School. That covered this past year's summer school and last summer's summer school. So we have completely reimbursed for the funds that were allotted. The, the next one is the HVAC. Money has been spent, it has not yet been reimbursed. We just got the official Davis Bacon language back from the contractor, so now that we have that, we can submit that for reimbursement. That still has another year on it as well. The, excuse me, the Esser Three Unfinished Learning that we have, was started in March of twenty-one, we have until September twenty-four. There's five hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars left there. And then there's the Esser Three Before and After School, which again, we have until next September to spend, and there's a hundred thousand dollars left there.
All right, all right. Board have any questions?
I don't have any, Mr. Stone.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
All right. Next item is update from Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. David Beal. Good to see you, sir.
Good evening. Good to be here. Brief report for you tonight. We've cleaned some pipes on the Obly Hope and Melrose Church Road. We graded shoulders on two oh one and two hundred. Cut brush on Apple Grove, three sixty and down on Lewis Sutta. We've patched potholes countywide. We've completed all of our mowing and litter removal countywide. We repaired a pipe down at Judas Sound, and we did an asphalt patch on Dodlett Road. We've also prepped all of our snow equipment. Pleased to announce that Las Vegas Area Headquarters received a hundred percent on their dry runs. All their equipment is ready to go. And Mr. Man Lanningham informed me today, he's completed all of his contractor inspections as well. So we're ready for whatever the Lord brings.
I just hope we don't need it.
I do too, but we're ready. Upcoming, we have a lot of pipe replacements on the list. I hope to get to them before the end of the year, but it may be the first of January before we start back on those. We'll continue to patch potholes and grade gravel roads countywide. We have some cleaning and repair to do on Loxley Hall and in the Sunnybank area. We'll continue to cut brush and mop on Mob Neck, and then we're emphasizing cleaning signs and repairing signs countywide. The plant make schedule is done, that work down Reedville is complete. And the one update I have on the structure and bridge, the scour repair project, that project is bundled with four others, three of which are in the Northern Neck. That goes to add in February. I do not know which one they will start with, but completion of the, all four jobs is November of twenty-four. So I hope to see some activity on six oh one at Bush Mill Creek sometime in the spring, but it may be later in the summer. That's all I have for you all. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take...
Any board members have any questions, comments?
No.
Start anywhere. Start anywhere. Johnson, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Long?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Brand?
Nothing at all.
Tom?
As an email, thank you for cutting that road on trees on 60666. I talked to the farmer today. He was very happy because his combine would have had some issues with that. It, the people had cut the road, but they left it right at the edge of the pavement, and with the combine, they'd had a little trouble. So he was very appreciative, and he did a nice job pushing it back up, too. So not just getting it past the ditch, but up back up on top of the bank.
I'm glad we could take care of it. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I don't have anything.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for getting everything done. And next item, it's a presentation to be one from Rob Mangrum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rob Mangrum, consulting engineer, working with Mr. Tadlock and his staff. We have some slides, I think, that we're going to bring up. We're going to discuss, we're discussing the high school, middle school treatment plant modifications project. So project drivers for this is to reduce operational complexity of the existing treatment system that discharges to the unnamed tributary at Crevel Mill Stream. As you, as I'm sure, as sure you know, there's a biological activated sled treatment system that was built with the middle school, high school. And it has very, second bullet, very stringent discharge limits for ammonia. And so ammonia is a, it's a very difficult parameter to meet, and your current limit is very low, is 0.48, and there is periodic noncompliance. And so to maintain status quo, significant improvements project would need, would be needed. And so that's kind of where we've looked at holistically, what was the best approach to do. The additional aspects to consider was future limits. Statewide ammonia limits are basically being cut in half. The smaller, smaller plants have a longer time to comply, but those new permit limits have already started going out for larger facilities, and those facilities within, within a five-year permit time, we'd expect those limits will even lower. And so that would render this plant not being capable of meeting those limits, and a major obligation would be required. So with that being said, what was the other bigger picture items? There are daily process monitoring requirements for the facility, monthly permitting monitoring requirements, and the plant is presently 16,000 gallon per day plant. Based upon maximum conditions of flow evaluated over about a four-year period, the maximum flow is about 4,000 to 5,000 gallons per day for a max week conditions for the entire middle school, high school, sports complex. And so the amount of flow they actually have is substantially less than the capacity of the plant. Another important item is, is something that we learned is the elementary, elementary school drain field system is a 7, 7,500 gallon per day drain field, and it's less than half capacity utilized right now. And so with all these, with all these parameters we've evaluated, we landed on a, on a solution in the next slide. And so the benefits of proposed changes would be reduced operational complexity of the existing treatment system. So our, what our plan would, would do is, would remove the ammonia limits now and for the foreseeable future for the treatment facility at the nor- at the high school, middle school. It would still continue that facility to operate, but at a lot lower capacity. It would move to quarterly process monitoring requirements and annual permit monitoring requirements, and that'd be one submission of a DMR once per year. Under those scenarios, the plant would be limited to, be limited to 1,000 gallons per day. The reason why we're looking at that option is because 1,000 gallons per day, even though it seems small, it's still about 20% of your wastewater on a maximum day basis. And would that, would, would that also allow you to do is, on the bottom bullet, would be us sending the remainder of our wastewater from the middle school, high school, and sports complex to the elementary school system. It would still only be at 80% utilized under maximum conditions, and those are for about seven to eight weeks a year. And those other times, it would be substantially lower than that. That system includes, I didn't put up an engineering diagram, but in a big picture, what we'd be doing would be having equalization and a pump station at the, at the high school, middle, middle school. And then we would send some wastewater to the existing treatment facility. The remainder would go up to the elementary school. But an added benefit to the elementary school system would be, we'd put in two separate 9,000 gallon equalization tanks. And so we would, the current wet well there is right around 7,000 gallons, so we'd be putting 18,000 gallons of storage there at the elementary school. So then, so even under normal conditions, a lower flow rate and, and a lot more, a more uniform system would go to the drain fields. We had the drain field inspected by two separate companies, and the drain field system is in very good condition. The laterals look good. Everything that we could do, we did some digging and looked at things, that the system looked good. It's in very good condition. The other added benefit of going this approach, again, doing 1,000 gallons per day, would allow you to continue to, there's, there's existing infrastructure at the wastewater plant, and that gives you added advantage, because if we didn't use that for the 1,000 gallons, it would push that 80% number higher. And that was kind of getting uncomfortable for us and the health department. Secondly, for us to do another plan, let's say like a drip irrigation, we would end up having to use the reserve area for the elementary school drain field. So, so our, our plan doesn't touch the reserve area. So right now, you have 100% reserve area, which is the ball fields back behind Elementary School, is there dedicated for if we ever needed another drain field system for Elementary School. You have 100% reserve area that's being untouched. We're not touching that as part of this project. So in a nutshell, we'd be, and we worked through the permitting with DEQ, and you, and the permit would change from a 16,000 gallon per day to a more, to a, to a 1,000 gallon per day permit. You'd lose your, you would drop off permit limits, become more simplified operation. We, we vetted it out with DEQ. There are two different offices. BDH is on board with us as well. We've worked with them. We're not compromising the grandfather status of the existing elementary school system, because since it was put in so long ago, we're not, not jeopardizing the, the grandfather status, which is, which is some benefits to if you just did a new drain field system today. There are different aspects you have to go, which, which cost money. So the next slide is the, right now, is, is the preferred schedule. We, the plans and specs are ready to go for the invitation to bid very soon, as authorization be given. This, the funding source here needs to be utilized, Mr. Tadlock, at the end of 2024?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so these ARPA funds, I mean, these are the, the no restricted ARPA funds, per se, but we still need, need public procurement, but we, it allows us to advertise and bid and get the project moving and get it completed and well ahead, but still, projects still take time. So we, time is of the essence. I think we'd still be completed in November timeframe if we meet that schedule with some cushion. The project is, we, the project's been designed to, to use components that are readily available. They're not, we, the project contains like 5,000 precast concrete, basically septic tanks, but they're the large 9,000 gallon version. So reducing long lead time items or complexity in, in construction. So hopefully, we can get some interest from, from local bidders for this type of work. We have a full, a pipe, a two-inch pipeline that ran from the high school to the elementary school. It followed the tree line. It'd go around the cell tower, follow the tree line around, and that would be just a two-inch line. It'd be a HDPE line, no joints, a single, single piece of pipe between the, between the two locations. And that's basically the, the who, what, when, why, and how of, of the project. Welcome to answer any questions. We've done a lot of deliberations about permitting and things, and I believe we landed on the right solution for, for the county and for the schools.
All right. Board members have any questions? Wasn't in our original conversation, we were talking about abandoning the sewer plant completely?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then just have a, have a drain field out there to take care of all of the water and that?
Well, we would need, it was going to have to be a drip irrigation system based upon the area needed.
Okay.
And so what would, so what we, and we worked through with the health department on this, and because of today's rules, the treatment system would still have to stay in operation. It just wouldn't discharge, and we'd have to pre-treat all that water and then do drip irrigation. So, and the disadvantages of that being, we would be taking basically the reserve area for the elementary school, because that's the only good soil around that area.
I understand that, yep.
And we would, even though we don't, would be discharging, we would still have actually the same level of treatment required because of the Chesapeake Bay requirements, that we'd have to be removing nitrate for doing a new drip irrigation system. And, and to do, remove nitrate requires you to convert ammonia to nitrates, or back to the critical ammonia process. And so basically then, it was going to require us to spend a lot of money on activated sled system to not even discharge, then to go and, and put in drip irrigation system that was going to take away reserve area for the elementary school. And it was going to be costly. So it had a lot, a lot of disadvantages. And so we, that's where we moved away from that. But that was the initial thinking. We tried to regular drain field as well, but with rules being different and things, there was other challenges with that, and they came back to having to do treatment before that. So we went back to having to do improvements to the, to the treatment system, which doesn't, doesn't make sense, because we have this solution.
All right. Now, you said that the ammonia standards would be dropped down?
Yes, sir.
Over the years, and same plant's going to have the ammonia standards dropped?
Yes, that, that statewide. We've, we've already seen that for-
Which has, that is a good thing right there.
That is a, that's a good thing from a, from a treatment limit perspective, yes, but that, but with your limit already so low, because it's a, it's a dry ditch, that you're basically at a level of treatment that far exceeds basically any other wastewater treatment plant basically in the state for ammonia. And ammonia bacteria that perform that are the most sensitive to everything. And so for a small plant that receives lots of flow for short periods of time-
Yeah.
-and no flow for periods of time, with no other, as a very, very tall order. So, so there would be a lot of money spent to be able to meet those numbers. You have to do a lot of things to, to really package for, to make that plant to be able to do that, and it would still be a tall order.
All right. Board members have any questions?
Going with this system, would it reduce the man hours required to monitor it then?
Absolutely. We've moved from, if we go back to the first slide, right now, we actually have daily process monitoring requirements in the permit. So some things have to be done daily. Some things can be recorded automatically. Some things have to be done daily, and there's monthly permit compliance, and paperwork has to be submitted. If we flip to the next page, we'd be going to quarterly process monitoring and annual permit monitoring, because basically the 1,000 gallons is basically like a, a, for, for a household or something like that type of treatment system. Those, those types of limits. The blanket permit, it's a different department of DEQ, so that's why they set the threshold for 1,000 gallons, and they're fine with us doing that. And, and it solves a regulatory burden right now we presently have of, of the current facility.
That looks like roughly a 75% savings on those items that he's got in those bullets right there.
Yeah.
Sorry, my turbo hearing aids are on. I said, that sounds like a 75% savings on those two bullets, one slide versus the next one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Anything we can do for a little bit of savings?
And you keep your flexibility. That's the benefit of the 1,000 gallons, really, says, keeps you from, you still have a, a thing that you can use. It, it is a lower operational standard, but then it keeps it from, you don't want to be 100% loaded on the drain field. Even if it's for seven weeks a year, that's not a good place to be. And so we wanted to find a different way, so we did.
And this is covered by the ARPA funds?
That's correct. We are looking at using those funds for this project, and we've, in our planning of those funds, we have earmarked those funds for this particular project.
And I know this plant's been an ongoing issue. I think we need to move forward.
All right. Any other questions?
I have, the only question, concern I have is, in this proposed plan, the elementary drain field, if that failed, which then right now, by this plan, would cover both elementary school and the high school, middle school-
Yes, sir.
Would the reserve drain field drip irrigation be able to take both of them?
Yes, sir. The reserve area is 100% sized for a 7,500 gallon drain field, and that is, and that was more than adequate under our current plan to do that, and that's why we, we pulled 1,000 gallons per day off. Because that number seems low, but that's significant, and you can do that seven days a week. So 7,000 gallons is a lot, is a lot. So, so yes, so that's why, and, and we're not touching the reserve area for that exact purpose.
My concern with failure, I don't want us then to have to go to the plant and be upgraded and get all that stuff.
That's right.
That was my biggest concern when I heard the possibility.
Yes, sir. Say drain field and have 100% reserve area for, for 20, 30 years from now, when that drain field is 67 years old, that we'd have 100% reserve area for, dedicated.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Tadlock?
If the board doesn't have any other further, or any further questions, I'd thank Mr. Mangrum for coming down and explaining the process and the project. If the board is comfortable, we would just ask, because of the timeline, that we get permission from the board to move forward in issuing the invitation for bids.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. All right. We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Smacker? Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
All right. Next on the presentations would be Jerry Davis. Come on up, Mr. Davis. Good to see you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I guess I'm here to see if, on behalf of the county, to pursue a planning grant-
Yes.
-from the Department of Housing and Community Development to do a county, countywide housing assessment. Little background, earlier this year, when the Planning District Executive Committee was working out its work plan for the year, Mr. Long, county representative, was on the executive committee, so we were talking about the different projects and work items that would go into the plan, and it was expressed that, by Mr. Long, that he'd like to see housing needs addressed as, as part of the, of this year's plan. So the way, as you know, there's been some prior housing rehabilitation projects that have been funded with community development block grants, most recently Light Street, before that BlackBerry. Of course, the community development block grant also funded the recent Calio Business District Revitalization Project. So the county's utilized community development block grant funds a lot, as do all the counties in the Northern Neck and, and the towns. We've done a number of these housing projects throughout the Northern Neck over the years, and the first, the first step in the project is to get a planning grant and develop a plan of action, so you're, you, you know where, how to go back and rehabilitation, rehabilitation project. So that's what this is. This, this effort would be to look countywide and try to document potential housing units that may be substandard. And we do that in a variety of ways. We reach out to a lot of stakeholder groups. We do windshield surveys, and we'll plot all this on a, on a map showing where those whole units are, and to see what it looks like in, in number and, and where they're at, and develop a strategy for pursuing a rehab project going back. Likes to do these typically in where houses are sort of clustered in a neighborhood, kind of setting like Light Street was and BlackBerry. However, they will, they will do rehab projects if housing units are sort of scattered around, too. They don't, so that is eligible. But we won't know that until we do the necessary planning work and see- and see, see where the units may be and what it looks like. So this is the first step. I'll tell you, there's, the planning grant money's available. I would say if the application goes in, most likely it'll, it'll get funded, and we can, we can start right on the project. We would do this through the
Planning District?
With, working with Bay Housing, Bay Aging, the Housing Division. And just Randy Logan is here from, from Bay Housing. We work with Randy a lot. Randy is a housing, so he does a lot of the, a lot of the work on these projects. Got Alex DeGuerin from the Planning District as well, so he does a lot. So, working with the county, staff to, through the process.
Right now, is this to see if there's interest in pursuing a planning grant?
The state would want to know that the locality supports it, that there's community interest and community support for such an effort. Other than that, it's just we request in for the planning grant funds, and, and we can start, start the effort. Be glad to answer any questions.
Time frame on getting funds?
We'd like to get the application in. We'd have to go in by December 15th. We'd expect an answer fairly, probably within a month.
Month, all right.
Or so, and then you get under contract and you start. So, I need to turn around, it would go pretty quick.
So, some timeframe on how long it would do the project to, I mean, to evaluate what has to be done?
I mean, realistically, to do it right, I mean, you're talking about probably six to 12 months.
Six to 12 months, okay.
To do it, you know, because you're going to have to do, you have to do, go out and do windshield survey. You just got to drive the whole county and document it and so forth.
All right, and that would be countywide?
Countywide.
Okay.
Yeah, and to see what it looks like. We'd be requesting $50,000. They've raised the limit on planning grants, so it's, we'd ask for the 50,000. And that's pretty much it.
Any board members have any questions?
Any county match? Any matching funds from the county required? Is there a match for this, for the funds?
Uh, no match.
Okay.
Yeah, the grant pays for everything.
Yeah, I can say that we've been very successful in helping the people in North Thumlin, and Jerry and his committee have done a great job. And we were able to help people who do not have running water and other necessities. So, it's very important that we take this opportunity to make sure we get this grant.
And I'll just say that, and that's a good, good lead-in, Mr. Long, is that if, if, when you get an implementation grant and do, and get the money to actually rehab a house, what could be involved? So you're looking a house that may not have water, sewer, provide for that. You look at structural issues of the house, you look at mechanical, I mean, it's across the board. HUD publishes a set of standards that determine the minimum housing standards for a dwelling unit. So the whole purpose is to bring units up to those standards. Now, some, sometimes after you've done your evaluation and Randy goes out there and does his inspection and everything, some ha, sometimes a house can't be rehabbed. It can't be re, so in that case, the program will allow you to demolish the old house and build a new house. And there's been a number, I mean, I'll just go back to Light Street. I think we had a number of new housing units that were built in the neighborhood. So, that's, that's, that's not unusual. We currently have two, two housing grants that are pending. We're expecting announcements on those probably next week. One's in Richmond County, in a, it's a, one Scott Town Road in Richmond County, and then one's in, in town, in the town of Warsaw. So those are applications that have already gone in, and we're, we're pretty optimistic that they're going to get funded. And then we have that project down in Whitestone right now. We did a housing rehab project down there, followed with a business district revitalization project, and we're in the final stages of that. So, the timing on this would be, would be good to go get, do the planning and position ourselves for being able to pursue implementation funding in the near term, so.
All right, any other comments, questions? Any other comments, questions from the board? If not, much pleasure to board.
I think we need to move forward. Second.
Second.
I think we do, too.
Yep, and I'll make it in the motion.
All right, we got a motion, and who wants a second? All right, Mr. Long? Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, is that all, that's all you needed? All right.
Just one final request, if you might.
Yes, sir.
We were going to use tonight's meeting to satisfy the requirement of having a public meeting. It is a public meeting.
Yes.
It would just be helpful if there's anybody here that came tonight that are in support and would like to see this happen, that they would just raise their hand, and we could, we could document that.
Who's in support of this? All right.
That, that side, then you got someone on that side.
Yep, we got some on both sides. Do, do we need names, or can we just go by names?
We've got better than half the room.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we've got probably 15, 20, at least. Yes, questions? Anybody have any questions that they want to get answered? That might what should we do right now?
I think you've done all you need.
It's, it was just a public information meeting, as, as far as I understand it. That's up to the board as to what you all would like to do. You satisfied, I guess, that requirement that the D H C D has.
All right, well.
I think we got a long night.
I think we got enough.
You've got very much on your agenda yet.
Yeah.
He hasn't got to his agenda.
I know, he hasn't got to it yet. We've got very much there to do.
There will be future, in the near term, future opportunities for people to get their questions answered.
Well, we have a public comment period coming up. I guess we could, we could listen to the questions and all then.
Right.
All right. Ma'am? Yes, ma'am. Yes, you, yes, you can. You can contact Mr. Tadlock right here. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right. The next items on your agenda would be the county administrator's report. Mr. Tadlock, let you take care of that.
Yes, sir. First item I have is the permits for October. We had 11 new structures. Total construction cost, $6.2 million. Total construction cost year-to-date is about $51 million, but it puts us about approximately $520,000 below this time last year.
Okay.
Next item I have is a reappointment for the local Board of Social Services, and Paul Carlson is willing to serve again.
With Chairman, I move we reappoint him for another term.
Reappoint who?
Reappoint him.
Paul Carlson.
Paul, Paul Carlson. All right, I got a motion to have second.
Second.
All right, I got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
I served with him on the board. He shows up regularly and contributes questions, so somebody's willing to do it.
All right. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, I have several supplemental appropriations that we need completed. We've received money for the repairs to a vehicle for the sheriff's office in the amount of $987. It needs to be appropriated to 3102-3012.
So moved.
All right, got a motion to have second.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next supplemental appropriation is in the amount of $568.75 for the ballgames for the sheriff's office that they've worked. Goes to 3102-1006.
So moved. I got a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is a supplemental appropriation for the VA Corp. An insurance claim for lightning strikes in the amount of $8,117.27 goes to line item 3102-7009.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yep, I moved it with pass.
Got a motion and a second again?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an all-in for the ballgames worked by the sheriff's office in the amount of $1,627.50 goes to line item 3102-1006.
Moved it with grant.
I got a motion, second again, all right. Y'all fellows on a roll tonight.
We're working there.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the supplemental appropriation for the opioid abatement settlement funds in the amount of $1,837.62 goes to line item 5102-3200 for fiscal year '24.
Moved it with grant.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
What are these funds going to be used for?
They are very specific in what they can be used for. We are currently, I know Mr. Basie has been attending several webinars, and there's, you, you want to be careful so you don't jeopardize other funding in how these funds are, are utilized. We are looking at several regional projects with the regional jail. But we currently have, I think it's about $45,000 that we've received so far. So, we, we are looking into more of how these funds can be used.
Well, can it be used to help the community service board? I understand the jail people are in jail for drug problems, but when they get out, they're still going to need some counseling to keep them from relapsing and et cetera.
That, that is one of the regional projects as well that we've, we've been looking at.
Yeah, need that.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is a supplemental appropriation for the letter grant that we've received in the amount of $5,766 goes to 5302-5625 for fiscal year '24.
All right. So have a motion.
Moved, we approve.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is the state has provided the Constitutional Officers' Comp Board a 2% salary increase with associated increases. And to stay consistent with that in your packet, we've provided information for a 2% increase for not only the, the comp board employees, but county employees as well. The total supplemental appropriation that we would need is $112,398.37, and that's for the seven-month period that this would cover from December through the end of June. We had these monies in the, in last year's, or the, this year's proposed budget, but were ultimately cut, not knowing what the state was going to do at that time.
All right, much pleasure to board.
I moved with grant to address.
I'm seconding. What is the amount we're receiving from the comp board? Do you have a breakdown?
We only have the, the annual breakdown. We have not received the, the final amount for this fiscal year yet. But they are covering two additional treasurer's office positions. So, we are going to be receiving more funds back than what we previously received.
But the bottom line of that $112,000 change, not all of it is pure county fund. It is some of it.
Some of that does include the, and that, that amount does include the salary and the benefit cost. And that, a portion of that is being reimbursed by the, the state.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, any other discussion? Excuse me, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Several meetings ago, the board had asked for a draft bid document regarding the roof for this building. And Mr. Basie and I have been researching it a little bit further after the construction that's taken place on the E V B roof. And in discussions with that engineer, we found that if we move forward with an invitation to bid for the shingles, we, we would be able to move forward with that. However, some of the discussions revolved around getting a metal roof. And if we went with a metal roof, there is some engineering aspects to that metal roof. And that kind of result revolves around the area of the ice bridge or the ice dams that go along the, the roof. They have to be specifically designed based off the pitch of the roof, and they have to be spaced every so often. So, we decided to bring this back to the board to see if the board wants to issue an RFP for engineering services, or if the board wishes us just to move forward with invitation to bid regarding the roof replacement with shingles.
All right, Mr. Board, what's the board's pleasure?
What shall I suggest then, though?
Well, the, the roof would, with the metal, would certainly give you a longer lasting roof. So, but there is a higher cost. Do you remember, I'm sorry, I put you off the spot, but, um, the, the estimate that the engineer provided was kind of rough figures, and I, we can't, I can't figure, remember exactly what that number was. And, but there would be a significant amount of increase to do a metal roof versus the, the shingle roof.
You'd have the additional cost of the metal plus the engineering fee.
That's correct.
And that's probably going to be, that could be twice, probably twice the cost.
Will it last twice as long?
That's right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
Metal roof ought to be good for at least 50 years. Shingle's going to be good for 20, 25 at the most, if you're lucky. That's right, if you're lucky.
It's like a commercial they used to have, and I won't name the company. Pay me now, or pay me later.
I'm almost at the point, I think we should entertain the idea of getting an engineer to look at this roof and then see what the costs are.
I, I move that we get, are necessary to have an engineer look at this, too.
All right.
Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So just be clear to move forward with the RFP process.
Move forward with RFP, yes, okay.
And then you get the engineering, then you can do, put them for shingle and metal and compare the cost, and then do your calculation for that.
You can, yep. All right, next item I have is that last month, the board had asked staff to draft the forensic audit RFP. And staff, you have in your board packet that draft RFP, and we did that from the standpoint of having the board talk to the contractors to determine the scope of work that's needed, based off the conversation that we had at the, the last meeting. Also, we drafted the RFP in a manner that, the board had requested a forensic audit RFP, but we drafted it in a manner that would allow the board some flexibility after talking to the contractors, that if you needed to go in a different route, that, then you could. Our concern was if we limited to, and the forensic RFP, or forensic audit isn't still stated in the, the draft. But our, our concern was if you limited that just to a forensic audit, we weren't quite sure if the board would have to, if you decided to go a different route, you would have to re-advertise it. So we were trying to save some time there, and So we were trying to save some time there in your decision-making. But you have the draft. We're open for any suggestions or changes to the audit RFP to move forward.
I've read this thing several times. The notion of forensic is like an afterthought in this document. The word shows up three times. The first time it shows up after the word or, the second time it shows up in a parentheses list at the end of the list. And one other place that I don't specifically recall. If I was an accounting firm and I looked at this and I wasn't qualified to do a forensic audit, I would still put in information, wasting the county's time. The board did pass unanimously a forensic audit. It doesn't happen that often that this board votes on a five-zero thing. This draft does not sufficiently meet the need or the intent of the board's vote. I would go further to say that the overwhelming majority of counties in the state of Virginia do forensic audits. And of those that do forensic audits, the majority of those do them as a matter of course. I would think that we should be able to do the same thing that other counties are doing. More specifically, I note that Dumfries probably has the most recent RFP out there for doing a forensic audit. But I'd like to see this thing get more direct. We're not looking for an audit of the nature that we already pay for. We're looking for something that digs considerably deeper. There are examples of RFPs by other counties who have the same needs and desires that we have.
Any have comments, questions? Comments from staff too?
I think it needs to go back and it needs to reflect on what the board voted on. It's examples out there, we got examples out there, we can go by.
All right, any other comments?
Let's send it back.
Staff have any comments? Back to questions?
No, we can go back and tighten it down to specifically what you all are requesting for the forensic audit. And as far as the scope of work, we can look at several examples out there and try to come up with what the scope of work is. Some of the discussion at the last meeting kind of revolved around the board talking to the contractor. So we didn't want to tighten that up and limit you too much. But we can go back through those examples and certainly make, pull some of those suggestions out and get that back to the board.
All right, so I would say from what I've been hearing, send it back and let you relook at it, redo it.
Okay, we'll work on it, get with Mr. Brigger as well.
All right. All right, I'll take care of that. Do you need that motion or is it?
I don't, you have the original motion, so I don't know that it's necessary as far as.
All right.
I think it's just a working document at this point, we'd try to get that back.
Good enough.
Next item I have is the board had discussed having a budget form. And we put a sample of that and basically it's taking the portion of the budget. And we're also working with ClearGov, which kind of models this a little bit with some of their forms of what we're looking for. But this is what would be sent out for each department. And we would be doing that around this timeframe, sending those letters out to each of those departments for their budget request. And it allows them to put in the amount that they're requesting. It also has an explanation, increase, decrease. In the letter that we would be sending out, we would ask them to attach any supporting documentation that they also find that needs to be submitted as well. I don't know if this follows or kind of goes with what you were looking for or if there's something different that you may be.
No, I'd like to go back where you have the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget and also add in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget. Also, give us three years that we can take a look at. And I guess, what is, what are you thinking about the process for this? Is this going to be sent out to each department head and they're going to be responsible for filling this out and getting it back to you and Mary and then y'all can plug it in?
That's correct. And that's the process, how we work that now is we send the budget letters out to the department heads and some of the outside agencies. And they in turn send their request, some actually fill out something similar to this anyway. And we would receive that information back and we would plug that information into the budget. The timeframe on that is we've typically in the past, we would have sent the letters out around this timeframe, November, and they would be due end of January.
And I guess you've gone through the effort of putting this together. And I feel that every person that's going to be submitting a budget to this county is part of the county needs to follow this process.
Right.
You don't need to accept anything other than what you see here and what you're working on.
All right, so basic formatting is okay if everybody?
I like it.
Unless they have some specific.
I think it's a good start.
What was that?
Unless they have some, some ideas that might not, might help the farm that can talk to Mr. Long.
That'd be fine, yeah.
Right.
That's always fine.
He's got, he's got room in here for explanations.
Right.
All right, do you need that in a motion or do we, we can do it just like it is?
We can just make this part of the process. I think as we work on it, it's going to evolve as we move forward with it. So we'll move forward with it.
All right, thank you. What else do you have?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing else, okay. All right, next item would be the board supervisors' items. We have the approval of the check register. Hope everybody's had time to review the check register.
I move that we approve.
All right, I got a motion to approve or have second?
I second it.
All right, any have a discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next would be board comments. And we'll start with Mr. Johnson.
I sent out an email regarding the registration question for the purposes of taxing vacation rentals, short-term rentals. I did get some responses back, but they don't quite scratch my itch. So I'm told that this is, this is what we do and this is just a certification. But I'm, I'm looking at the form right here. And mind you, this is from the perspective of the fact that vacation rentals, short-term rentals and anything but R four is a by right use. But we have an application, not a registration form. It's an application that asks a number of okay questions. But we get down here into the zoning part. And it says here, I understand approval of this permit is contingent upon approvals of necessary federal and state agencies. These seem to be mutually exclusive with a by right use, these words. And I go down further and I see approval and denial. This document looks like somebody who has a by right use is actually applying for permission to do what they've already got a by right use for. This is sending a really bad signal to the people that have that by right use. And I know that it's probably semantics to some, but to the people that have to put their name on this piece of paper, it's important. I think that this thing needs to be wordsmithed a little bit more.
All right. So I went to, what's the question?
I gotta be honest, I'm happy to pay the two percent tax. And I'm happy to put my name on a piece of paper that says the property that I operate. I will not put my name on a piece of paper that tells me that I'm applying for a permit when none is expected.
All right.
So I'd like to see it go back and redrawn up. It's not hard, you can achieve the goal that you're looking for without sending double signals. And oh, by the way, there's one last point on this. You're asking the people to come register, to provide information so that they can be taxed. And you're charging them seventy-five dollars for the honor of answering the question. They're going to be paying you thousands of dollars. That's bad form. It may be legal, but it doesn't make it a good thing to do.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
I'm done.
You're done, okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Long?
What's the update on the old school board office?
Mr. Long, to be honest with you, we've had several other projects going on right now. So we have not made any traction on the old school board office. But it hasn't fallen off our radar, it's just we've had several other things going on, so.
And this board needs to sit down and have a discussion on it before they can actually move along.
Right. We really do. Because there's quite a few out there that are showing interest, so we need to move on that. Probably have a special meeting and talk about it.
All right.
Get it behind us.
You have anything else, Mr. Long?
That's it.
Mr. Brown?
Big County went in with the YMCA and the tavern. And we had our first Halloween boo-bash, which was a trunk of treat. And we had a boo, it was probably well over four hundred people attended. And it was, it was very nice. I want to thank Morgan and everyone that helped put that together. They put a lot of time in it. And we've got people looking forward to next year. We have, let me see if I find my date. December second, we're going to have a lighting of a tree ceremony here again at the old courthouse. We had that last year. And the time on that is going to be at four-thirty. And there will be events here all day. The tavern is going to have events starting that morning and leading right into the tree lighting ceremony as well. And I'd like to add that I want to thank everyone that come out and voted for me. Run unopposed, but I do appreciate your votes. And all the support, you know, it's, it's, it's good. It was good to see people out at the polls. I want to congratulate the ones that won and I want to thank the ones that run and weren't successful. I want to thank them for at least trying and putting forth an effort to run. It's very important.
It is.
And that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Tomlin?
Mr. Long, you saying something?
Yes. So I'm at the choir, we don't have like two choirs in elementary. We don't have a high school, we don't, we don't have a high school choir.
They're not going to participate, are you?
Okay. So you have the elementary.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
All right, Mr. Tomlin?
To Mr. Long. The only thing I had is what comes up, came up from the boiler project. What I suggest is that we have a spreadsheet or whatever you want to call it, that anytime there is a property purchase that has a building or new equipment, determine its useful life and plan for its replacement and have capital maintenance until it is such replaced. I don't like being put into positions where we've got something that's falling apart and we've got to do something right now. That is a failure to plan. And that's not the way it should be done. And I think we need to start doing that. Like when the elementary school was built, it was built in ninety-four to ninety-six. Certain things started then and the warranties last. And then it's like we can see, the roof, the air HVAC systems, the boiler systems, they all going to expire. We have to be able to plan so we're not in a position of emergency or failure to plan. And that's all I have to say.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, can you give something to us, form, spreadsheet, whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, we can start working on that and see what we can.
And this applies not just to the county's, but the school and any other organizations, like the chief, I see him. His vehicles, they have a planned useful life based upon the mileage. Plan for replacements and county vehicles, plan for the replacement.
When you buy it.
What?
Even if it's new, you plan for replacement when you buy it.
Brand-new, you're going to, like the sheriff, he plans for his vehicles to last four or five years. We have to be able, and that's when you plug those things into your capital improvement program. So you putting the money aside, planning for replacement, so we don't get an emergency scenario and then we don't have a big jump in everything.
That's correct. That is correct.
Use the capital improvement program the way it should be used.
All right.
Only other thing is, I would like to thank Mr. Haney for showing up under the circumstances. Again, sorry for the loss of your mother, but I was, in one sense, glad you're here. Then the old warm pitcher of spit wouldn't have to do anything over there.
Well, I did think of that.
Yeah, I know, I did too.
I did think.
But I thank you for being here, but I know you're, and it shows your commitment to this county too. So I want to commend you for that again. Condolences, Wayne Wallace, your mother.
Well, I thank you very much. And I thank all the comments and all that I've gotten from everybody here at the board, here through the county, here all, all through the county, corridors, everywhere. I just thought that I need to keep my commitment to the county. And mama would not want me sitting around moping and everything else. She would want me to get on her here and do my job. So that's why I'm here. Thank y'all very much. And I would also like to thank all the candidates who ran and who lost. At least they made an effort to do something. So thank everyone.
And I'd like to thank the voters who voted too.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
We need more participation by voters as much as we do candidates.
Right.
I hear we got fifty-one percent.
That's a bet right for you.
All right. Now, next item is committee updates. Everybody see that on their agenda?
Yes.
No comments, anything on that from the board?
Well, nobody's going to jump in front of me, I guess I'll go.
You go ahead.
All right. Let me get on the right page here. Joint Finance Committee between the school board and the county met November the second. The initial focus was to discuss to members unanimously to agree to recommend the scope of both the board of supervisors and school boards work with the budget. The budget process for both the school board and overall county budget were presented. The school board, Dr. Wargo done a. The school board, Dr. Wargo done a presentation on how the school budget was put together. Mr. Basie done a presentation on how the county budget was put together. Members discussed ideas for fixing the format differences. School board members suggested, and I believe it was Ms. Ovier, that the, she was gonna take back to the school board to see if we could use the same format, so Mr. Tadlock, the same format that you presented us tonight would be the same formatting that they would try to use or would like to use as well, to make things a little more transparent and a little more user-friendly. The scope that we talked about and that we were bringing back tonight before the board is basically for the 24, 25 budget. The scope is, and its focus point is, is to be timely and transparent. The approval of the school budget by the school, by the board of supervisors at the April 2024 board supervisors meeting, provided that the school board approved the budget, approved budget is submitted in January 2024, per the school board approved calendar. They rearranged their budget process and their dates to be able to get a budget before this board in January in hopes that if all the documentation is in place, questions are answered, that the board of supervisors can approve the school budget in April. And that is something that we are, we need to do a better job in getting a budget approved and working with the school on that. The transparent parts of the school budget will be submitted with a summary at the major, major classification level, and with a line item detailed and factual analyst and reporting. The process used to develop and analyze and approve the budget will fully be explained and made publicly available. So, the short-term scope, once again, we're looking at time and transparency.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brand.
Our next meeting is the 30th, right? Five thirty, the school board, right?
Yeah, that's the joint board meeting.
Joint meeting, meeting with the board of supervisors and the school board. November 30th.
November 30th.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Brand and I both sit on that, on that committee together. I don't have anything else to comment on, Terry, he's done a very good job on Terry. All right. Our next item would be... Let's see, we moved the closed meeting to the end of the, of our public hearings tonight. The next item is our public comment period. Morgan, do we have anybody? Public comment. Yes, ma'am. The vacation rental, then the solar, and then the... Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right. On our public comment period tonight, sign-up sheet, our first person to speak or has signed up would be Thomas Hudnall. Come on up, Mr. Hudnall.
Good evening, Boyd.
Good evening. Glad to see you here.
Nice seeing you. I just want to comment on the grant. If this money has already been allotted, I think we should take advantage of it because, like I've said before, we have a lot of older people in this area. Homes need to be steps upgraded, some shingling, some guttering, and the family members, kids to stop living away. And if we can get this money, please help these people.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hudnall. Next person would be Joe M. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, you're here tonight, sir?
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Oh.
Oh! Well, we're glad you got that far.
That's right. That's a blessing.
I'm 85.
85.
85. I have built a place to fish here in 95. I served on the board with Mr. Tomlin at the library, served on the board at the tavern, I served on the board at Best Landing. I own about, I own a little over a million dollars' worth of property in this county, and I love this county. And this is the first meeting that I've been to. I've been in a lot of school board meetings, but this is the first one I've been to. I drive down, I live in Best Landing, I built the first house in Best Landing. And when I drive down Coverhouse Road, I usually go through Light Street. And I've watched its development since 95 until now. And its improvements. And I'd like to thank the county, thank the board of supervisors for all the improvements that are there, and I'd like to support the grant. I live in a lot of cities, and usually what happens is when we have visitors come to cities and the places, we drive them through all the good places, and we avoid all the bad places. And so you don't see the improvements, and you don't see the need. That road has been there since the 1600s, and it's an important part of the county. And to see the progress on it, I just wanted to encourage and to support the grant program and offer my services in any way that's necessary, and to thank you. And thank you very much for being here, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you too, sir.
With the loss of your mother and your dedication to the county, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
That's my comments. Thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And, Mr. Thompson, don't make this your last meeting, come back, please.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next person is Tom Jeffries.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Tom Jeffries, I'm the chairman of the Northern Neck Patriots. I have a great interest in the workings of the Northern Neck Regional Jail. Our jail likes to remind the public at monthly meetings that it manages affairs so well that there is zero cost to the participating counties. Other than Gloucester's buying agreement, that appears to be the case. The county's approved the jail board budget on an annual basis on behalf of we the people. Our jail likes to tout itself as one of the top revenue-producing jails in the Commonwealth, with one of the lowest per diem rates, cost per inmate, in the state. The only way a business enterprise achieves such a status is by maximizing income while minimizing expense. In other words, paying the minimum required for prisoner care, food, medical attention, and of course, staffing. I've brought to the jail board's attention on numerous occasions allegations of mistreatment of pretrial detainees housed in the jail for charges resulting from January 6, 2021. As a reminder for anyone who needs it, pretrial means you are not yet guilty. I've been highlighting these problems to the jail for over a year now, and we've implored the jail, jail board to investigate the allegations we've reported. We've been met with defensiveness, obfuscation, and indignation over bringing such allegations to their attention. So be it. If these allegations prove out to be baseless or unfounded, as Chairman Fisher likes to say, I will stand here in front of you and eat my words, PhD or not. Just yesterday, the Bureau of Prisons was questioned by Congress over mistreatment of January 6 pretrial detainees for their political beliefs. The BOP's response was that they have given very clear direction to staff that such treatment would not be tolerated. Will our jail be able to say the same thing, or will they simply repeat that they treat everyone the same regardless? I have heard multiple accounts of our jail staff inciting hatred against J-6 detainees by calling them racist terrorists. On the other hand, I can honestly believe that they simply treat everyone like dirt, convicted or not yet guilty. Examples: mice feces and roaches on the food, ingredients marked "not for human consumption", special diets, too bad, religious services, exercise and outdoor time, nonexistent. If you're a prisoner, it takes multiple inquiries to get a request form to make a complaint, and multiple request forms until a request is addressed. In other words, it takes long enough to make it easier to just give up. And now, as of September 20th of this year, Northern Neck Regional Jail has been approved to house juveniles. I request that this board take up the topic of juvenile housing at Northern Neck Regional Jail at your next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet? Would anyone else like to speak? Firsthand.
Karen Pika from Wycomico Church, and yes, thank you, Mr. Tomlin, for getting that tree fixed. I'm one of those folks that lives down there, and we will cut our way out if we have to, so thank you. Two things, one, with respect to the boiler at the school, I'm pleased to hear that the school did include this request in their CIP. My assumption then is that this is a planned expense, not an emergency one, and the county will not have to fund additional resources. I will go back and look through the school documentation, but I clearly heard that the manager said that this has been included in the CIP three times. So, that's good news, Mr. Tomlin, to your, to your point. And my second area of question is related to the community development block grants. The goal, the, the goal of those block grants is absolutely laudable. My questions are around what the county obligations are or the individual obligations. For example, if an individual homeowner does not choose to participate, are they allowed to opt out, or do they lose their sovereign rights over their property? The government has a lot of fingers and a lot of pot. Those CBDGs come, community development block grants, CDBG, come with a lot of strings. For example, one of them is that there be absolute public hearings and input at every stage of the process, you cannot skip that. There are reporting requirements that the grantees must do to the government. Some of that is in a system, some of it is not. So, there may not be a match that's required, but the questions that I have are around the sovereignty of the county and the sovereignty of the homeowners. It's an absolutely great program to make sure that we have people that are living in houses in which they should be living. If you choose to opt out, does the government still come in and raise your property? What are the requirements if they put up a new home? Do you have to have solar panels put on your roof? Who pays for the additional maintenance? Is it fully funded? Are you, are you getting a new home that then has a tail with expenses that you can't afford? So I think what we have to look at, along with the benefits of the program, what is it going to cost the residents in any additional funding? And was it gonna, what is it going to require with respect to allowing HUD and the government to come in, and do you have the right to opt out? So those are my questions related to the program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Sally Conley from Rose Landon Road.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, and maybe a comment after the question. Does the county issue permits for private runways and private planes, hangars? Do you, the county issue permits to build these?
Yes, we would.
I believe they are conditional use permits.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's right, that's conditional use. You correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tadlock.
No, that's correct, they're conditional use permits.
Okay, I have, oh, comment, uh... How are they regulated? And how do they, you know what cargo they're carrying?
That we would have to determine upon the application.
And nobody inspects them anymore after that?
The county wouldn't be inspecting it, inspecting it.
Well, I was here to meet some years ago, and somebody applied for a permit, and they were told that they would never get one because no one would know what they were bringing in or taking out.
I have no idea on that, ma'am.
Well, who would have an idea on that? Because I went to a meeting the other night with the committee, the sheriff, and a couple of deputies, and I heard at that meeting that most of the gun problem was related to the drug problem. Now, over there by Afton Church, there are four gray big barns, but they are hangars for planes. And I know that because riding by, the door was open, and I noticed it. So, I, I looked, and I just wanted to know, because we are having problems in the county. I've heard of problems with people shooting people and people using drugs and whatever. And a $20 junkie don't bring you in drugs because he gonna use what he brings. The man with the plane and the Mercedes and the whatever, that's where the drugs come from. I don't know if you've been to Columbia or not, but you go down there, see all the yachts and the beautiful speedboats that's been confiscated for carrying drugs.
Drugs, yes, ma'am.
That's my problem, and if you think that it's just a rumor, which it's not, quite a few people around the neighborhoods know about it. And I would like to say to the people, don't just sit and wait for the sheriff in disguise to do something. If you see something, say something. That's the only way, because you guys and the sheriff can't do everything by themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else like to speak? Yes. Hold on, I'll get you just a second, I'm sorry.
I'm Bob Kane from Lotsburg, Virginia.
Yes, sir.
I did sign a sheet up of four, five, or six, or seven names on there, I don't know what happened to it.
You didn't sign up on a public comment, you may have signed up on one of our public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if you, if you want to talk about the public hearing, we have to...
No, public comment, Solomon.
Public comment, okay.
I'm here because of the article that was in the Echo yesterday afternoon about the forensic audit. I've had extensive experience in my former life in budget formulation, execution, and so forth, and frankly, I thought this issue of the school board budget, or whoever's budget you're interested in, had already been taken care of until I read this article about the forensic audit. Mr. Brown tonight mentioned, I think, the same committee that I thought had been working on these budget issues, and not having any experience with forensic audits. I went to Google and found out a forensic audit is generally only taken place when there's malfeasance or fraud expected, and you'll need that level of detail in fact-finding in order to sustain charges in a court of law. And so, I'm really not clear on the purpose of this forensic audit unless there is fraud in the school system, in which I would encourage you to pursue it. But otherwise, I just don't understand why you would spend, it's gonna be an awful lot of money to have a forensic audit. And I think that money could be better spent by giving Mr. Tadlock, hiring someone to, as a budget officer for the county, to oversee all these issues that seem to be occurring in the county budget. I learned tonight, apparently, you don't have a long-range repair improvement program. That's pretty shocking to say it's true. That's elementary. And if it is a budget issue, I would suggest you hire a budget officer and spend full-time formulating, executing your budget, analyzing trends, making people justify their requests, and then seeing that the expenditures are, are made where they're programmed for. So like I said, I, I don't, unless you have some kind of legal issue, it doesn't seem that a forensic audit is appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Hello, good afternoon, or good evening, rather. My name is Sabrina Conley, and I'm here to support Mr. Davis and his grant. The reason why I support that is because I'm a local relative, and my job is to help people buy and sell homes. Now, the biggest downfall that I've come across... Now, the biggest downfall that I've come across is not being able to help buyers. One, they don't have the resources, which breaks my heart because I can't put these people in homes that need them. So, with that being said, I do think this grant would be a great opportunity for our community because the homes that I have gone in and that I've seen have leaky roofs, they have bad foundation issues, they do not have great supporting windows. The windows is very important to keep the heat and AC into homes. So, these are issues that I'm coming across that these people need help. Me, as a little girl growing up, I was one of those kids who had a leaky roof. My mom did all she could do to take care of us. Whenever it rained, we had to run and get something to stop the water. I don't want to see these people living like that. That's been 30 years ago, and imagine what's going on at this point in time. So, I do think that this grant will help a lot of families to live better lives, healthier lives, physically, mentally, and I'm here to support this grant and help any way I can to put families in homes. And that's what I want to say tonight.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am.
This is all grant stuff, but they're, I wanted to say something about they're trying to put in a horse thing down here in the county. The Star House in our town.
Ma'am, we haven't had that, that's on a public hearing. You'll be able to speak in.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows about it.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Would anyone else like to make a public comment tonight? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to make a public comment? Anyone in the virtual world like to make a public comment tonight?
No one.
All right. I'm gonna close the public comment period. All right. Our next item on our agenda will be our public hearings. Let's take a five-minute recess and be back here at 7:30. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting back to order, and we'll start with our public hearings tonight. Before we get started, I want to remind everyone that we have a four-minute speaking period. One person will have four minutes. If as a representative for a group, you'll have six minutes. And try not to be too repetitive on your conversations if you can help it. So, you know, but I know a lot of people will talk about the same thing, just different language, different wording. That's fine. All right. Our first hearing tonight is a request by, and the order we're gonna do them tonight, I know they're different, they're different on the agenda, but we had to change the agenda. Our first request would be a request by Charles W. and Christine Jacobs. Mr. Marston, you have that?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Charles W. and Christiane P. Jacobs, owners for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental on properties owned R3 residential restricted. Property is shown as tax map parcel 45B-3-20-6 and is located at 85 Leaning Avenue.
All right. Anyone here, Mr. and Mrs. Jacobs here?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to say something, ma'am, about your project?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up, please.
I do apologize, but I myself won't like to let you know.
Sir, good evening. My name is Christiane Jacobs and my husband, Charles Jacobs. We have the 85 Leaning Avenue, and we got it on 2017. We have now posted it in verbo as a short-term rental. And of course, it's really an exciting things to hear that it's in verbo, but coordinating with the guests, it seems to me that these are good families with small children, best friends, friends, husband and wife, mother and daughter. What I'm trying to say that they may not be from this town, but they are pleased to see the reveal. And not only that they are excited about this town, but the way we handle it, it appears to us that we are so blessed to offer it to them. And there are a reception that, yeah, there is a reception that these are rowdy people, but in fact, they are really good people. And we appear to you that you hope you consider granting us a permission for the conditional short-term rental. Actually, this is an act of kindness that you are offering to them. And actually, these guests, they have collected so many leaflets, restaurant menu, fest, town festival, and they are also offering it to the following guests. So, the act of kindness is being forwarded to the next and the next and the next. And these are supposed to be human kindness, and I hope that it will not be a problem to us, and it will not present a problem or a reception to us. And we are here to speak to you for your consideration. Thank you so much.
All right. Any board members have any comments or questions before we open the public hearing?
Not at this time.
All right. Okay, thank you. Let me open the public hearing, and then you can comment again. Thank you. All right. I'll open the public hearing on this issue. The first person I have signed up tonight is Natasha Henning.
Can you hear me?
It all should raise up some.
I'm going with a microphone. Can you, oh, there. Do this. I can't. All right. Good evening. My name is Natasha Hemming. I'm for, I live in Weems, Lancaster County. I would like to express my support for Charlie and Christiane Jacobs' application for a conditional use permit. Homeowners with vacation rentals contribute to job opportunities in their local area by hiring services such as cleaning, landscaping, property managers, contractors, and property maintenance. My husband, my husband Jason and I have been maintaining the Jacobs' property in Fleeton Beach for the past 18 months. We are a small, veteran-owned business that provides cleaning, general handyman, and yard services. Our main clientele are older residents who have retired here in the Northern Neck. Whilst that does generate a stable income, it is set as retirees are on a fixed income and can only afford services based on their budget. Vacation rentals have been beneficial as we generate more revenue with the amount of reservations and turnaround cleaning. Cleaning fees are set by the host, which the renter pays, is generally higher, and this helps us to keep our rates lower for our elderly clients, especially with the rising costs of living. With the extra income, our son, who is completing his senior year, has benefited immensely. He's a student pilot at Bay Aviation and Topping and wants to pursue a career as a commercial pilot. We would not be able to afford it without the Jacobs' family and our other rental properties. Based on our experience, the main guests that come to the area are families with small children. The platform used to list the vacation rentals allows both the host and guest to review each other. This feature compels the guests to abide by house and community rules and allows the host to vet their guests before accepting a reservation. In all the rental homes we maintain, there are house rules posted, a guest folder that promotes local businesses, restaurants, and places of interest in Northumberland and Lancaster counties. We also provide them a current copy of the REVA magazine. The feedback from customer reviews about their experience in the Northern Neck is always positive. Vacation rentals not only provide revenue for local businesses, they also create an incentive for the homeowner to keep their property well-maintained and visually appealing, adding to the aesthetics of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to have a person I have on the sign-up sheet is Christina Jacobs, and you just spoke. I know you signed up on the wrong sheet. That's all right.
She didn't have to sign up.
Yeah. All right. I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Come on up. All right.
Wrong in the county.
All right. Would, you were wrong in, James.
Except where it works.
Yeah. All right. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue of the vacation rental? Mr. Jacobs, I'll get right back to you in just a second. I'll get back to you in just a second, Mr. Jacobs. All right. Would anyone else like to speak on this vacation rental? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak on the vacation rental? Would anyone in the virtual world tonight like to speak on this vacation rental? No one? All right. Since we have no one else to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And Mr. Jacobs, would you like to comment now?
The Fleeton Beach Homeowners Association has a sign in front of the public beach that says, "Open to residents and guests." To me, that's kind of de facto approval by the homeowners that they want guests in there, and that's what we're supplying is guests.
I don't have anything to do with the Homeowners Association or that beach area. That would be something you'd have to do with the association.
Well, the sign is already up. It's been up this for years that they're welcoming guests.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, I'm well aware of the sign being there. Okay. All right. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve this one.
All right.
Up. Wait a second.
Hold on one second. Philip, would you mind read the conditions that we have?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including compliance with all applicable state, federal, and local laws, regulations, ordinances, or rules concerning taxes, including transient occupancy tax. A smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector shall be located in each bedroom and in any other location required by the building code. There shall be at least one off-street parking space for each bedroom and no on-street parking. The vacation home rental should have an access driveway to a state highway with a sufficient 12-foot width, 12-foot height, and condition to accommodate emergency services vehicles and equipment. The vacation home rental shall register and maintain registration with the county's registry. The vacation home rental shall register a local manager who possesses the authority and ability to promptly address and correct any violations of the conditions, use requirements, and or limitations applicable to the vacation home rental with the building and zoning office and the sheriff's office. This registry shall include the name, address, and telephone number of the local manager, and this shall also be posted in a conspicuous area of the vacation home rental. The vacation home rental's boundary line shall be clearly marked and identified for the occupants of the rental home. An inspection of the vacation home rental shall be conducted annually by the building official or designee and shall be paid by the owner pursuant to the county's adopted fee schedule. Recreational vehicles may be parked on the property, but may not be used by guests for living quarters during their stay at the vacation home rental. Renters' pets shall be kept under control at all times. Overnight occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons per residence. This conditional use permit is non-transferable and does not attach to the property if ownership changes. There shall be no golf cart use by the renters on the roads, and the applicant shall maintain liability insurance.
All right. Mr. and Mrs. Jacobs, do you understand the conditions?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. Now, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we approve this particular application. This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices, and in pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
Does that include the conditions as read too?
Yes.
You include, yeah. I want to make sure that you include the conditions.
I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion to second. Do we have any other discussion now? If we don't have any other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, like sign. All right. Mr. and Mrs. Jacobs, your motion passes?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now, next is a request by Mark Malli. Mr. Marston, would you take care of that?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Mark Malli, owner, for a conditional use permit to construct residential solar exceeding 25 kilowatts on properties owned R2 residential waterfront. The property is shown as tax map parcel 2-1-61 and is located at 1530 Monday Point Road.
All right. And would you read the conditions before we open the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Sure everybody has an idea.
The suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies. The solar array shall be constructed as shown on the site plan, and any further expansion would require board supervisor's approval. An eight-foot tall fence shall be constructed along Rock Lane and parallel to Monday Point Road to screen the solar array from ingress and egress on Rock Lane. The materials for this fence shall be approved by the zoning administrator prior to construction.
All right. Mr. Malli, are you here tonight? Come on up, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you for hearing my request. I want to thank Mr. Marston and his staff. This has been a long process, over almost a year, to go from our current solar field, which was approved by the county. And all we're asking is to add a few more panels on the side away from our neighbors. My wife and I are ready to accept the conditions, although I did send all the supervisors some alternatives because I thought two fences seemed excessive to me. I mean, I certainly respect my neighbors and their right to privacy, but actually, what I'm asking for in request really has nothing to, really won't impact my neighbors at all. But anyway, I would ask you to consider alternatives. If not, we're ready to accept the current conditions. Thank you.
All right. Hold on a second, Mr. Malli. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Malli?
I'd like to hear out loud what the options that you have on.
So, one option that I think would satisfy what my neighbors would like is to put an eight-foot privacy fence along Rock Lane so they can't see the solar panels that are there now, but to not put them on the backside because you really can't see those. They're very difficult to see. The other option is, instead of putting an eight-foot privacy fence, I think it would be better from an ecological standpoint is to put, you know... So one option that I think would satisfy what my neighbors would like is to put an eight-foot privacy fence along Rock Lane so they can't see the solar panels that are there now, but to not put them on the backside because you really can't see those. They're very difficult to see. The other option is, instead of putting an eight-foot privacy fence, I think it would be better from a ecological standpoint is to put, you know, five- or six-foot trees that will grow rapidly and to give natural shading, you know, and privacy for my neighbors. So those are the alternatives that I would like you to consider. But again, we will accept one of them. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing here?
Only thing I got, it's not a question that I have spoken with some of the neighbors, and they want defense.
All right. Okay.
I would say that I did read your letter, and I applaud your work with your neighbors. And I applaud your neighbors for working with you. Very well done.
Thank you.
No?
So I had discussed with my neighbors over a year. I was actually surprised that they were opposed to me adding anything because I did mention it over the last 10 months. And I was a little surprised that the board actually received letters against it. But, you know, again, I want good relations with my neighbors, so.
And I think your neighbors want good relations with you. They had nothing but kind words to say. And I think y'all on the right track.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open the public hearing on this issue tonight. I have no one on the sign-up sheet to speak tonight. Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing tonight? Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing tonight? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak on this public hearing tonight? Is that anybody? All right. All right, since I have no one that wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing, and the matter is before the board.
I have a question for Mr. Marston.
Yes.
We don't, do we have any setbacks on systems like this?
Primary structure setbacks?
Yes. Do it.
That's all we have is that 10-foot setback.
But nothing from, obviously, the view shed, so to speak, of the neighbors like this as an example?
No, sir.
Because I have seen several other scenarios where they do put it on the side of the hose as opposed to the hose. They don't want to block their view, but then they shift it to neighbors on the side.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Anyone else have any comments? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
With the conditions as read, I'll make this motion be made due in consideration of the public health and safety and general welfare of the community, public necessity, and convenience in the exercise of good zoning practices in pursuit of the body's statutory authority that this be approved.
All right, so it'll be approved with the conditions.
Yes.
Second.
All right. I got a motion in a second. All right. Do we have any other discussion?
The only discussion I have is not opposed to this, other than I think we need to have the planning commission look at some setbacks or some further than 10 feet or whatever it is, because you see some of these develop, quote-unquote, developments, where they're putting it right on the side next to a neighbor, whatever. And I think, I know we have for the utility and above, or medium above, we have setbacks. I think we need to think some about these private scenarios where it's not to discourage it, but to have, so we don't have any conflicts ahead of time.
All right.
With that, and also, I think we need to look into, we've run into this again, that if the code allows you to have up to a 25-kilowatt system, we should not allow, and it's nothing against Mr. Malli at all, we should not allow someone to go ahead and put posts in the ground or to put a switch, install a switch, to go beyond that in hopes that they will be granted a conditional use permit. I think it needs to follow the code, and if any additional panels need to be added or what have you, we go from there. In this situation, it's kind of had him at a disadvantage. If it wasn't approved, or not going to be approved, he would invest it money, and he'd just be looking at posts in the ground.
I mean, could have put it out by the road almost, given that long, long stretch of the property. I know there'd be more cost running the cable to the hose from the panels, but that would not have appeared with anybody else next to the road. But when you put it right next to neighbors, you know you're going to have an issue.
Right.
Because when I rode down and looked at it, I noticed how tight the issues, and I could understand the neighbor's concerns and would say objections with their concerns.
All right. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, like sign. All right. Mr. Malli? Your motion passes, sir. All right. Mr. Marston?
Yes, sir.
You take care of the Virginia meatpacking plant?
Yes, sir. We have a request by AFD LLC, trading as Virginia Halal Meat Farm, owner, for a conditional use permit to allow an abattoir commercial slaughterhouse on property zone A1 agricultural. The property is shown as tax map parcel 7-1-46A and is located on Fruit Plain Road.
All right. Is anyone here tonight representing the meat company?
Yes.
Come on up, sir.
I just had some leave replaced.
Oh, you take your time.
Alex falls up, sir.
My name is Wayne Nunnell, attorney from the south of New York down in Norberton, Virginia. And I thank you for hearing us tonight, and I thank all of you for coming here. And I hope after our presentation, a lot of answers will be given, and the concerns will be answered. Mr. Chairman, in my day, we played a little game called gossip. And one person would make a sentence and then pass it on to the next person, and then that person would pass it on to the next person. And by the time you got to the sixth or seventh person, it was not the same statement at all. And I think a lot of that's happened here. This project that Mr. DeWood, first of all, let me tell you this. Mr. DeWood has fallen in love with this county. He is a special forces retiree. He has done four terms in Afghanistan. He has so many medals, I can't tell you. I think I sent most of you some of this information in a pamphlet that we sent out. But just to say a few, he's got the Distinguished Service Medal. He's got a Certificate of Appreciation from two generals. He has the NATO International Security Assistance Medal, and he loves this country. He came to the Northern Neck, fell in love with it, bought 24 acres. He plans on not only building this facility on this 24 acres, but he plans on building a four-bedroom home in front of it. So this is the first part of him moving here, is getting his business here. So he's not a person that's coming here, he's coming here to stay and to be a part of the community and wants to have good neighbors' relations. He does not want to have bad relations with his neighbors. We hope after you see this program that the questions will be answered. But I can assure you that it will be done by all regulations. It's going to be U.S.-certified. The, just to give you one example of who he is, he, one of his special service brothers came all the way down here from Washington today so that he could tell you what a great guy this man is and what an asset he's going to be to the community, because he will be involved in the community. May I call him here just for a minute so he can make a statement? Robert? Robert is in law enforcement in the federal program, so, and he went to Afghanistan with Mr. DeWood. What can you say about Mr. DeWood, Robert?
Sure. My name is Robert Moore. I spent a tour in Afghanistan with Mr. DeWood. One of his four I spent with him. His four tours in Afghanistan, he spent with special operations and special forces units, frequently going into areas that were hostile, and we communicated with people that were equally hostile back. During that time period, I learned a lot about him, as you can only learn in that kind of a situation, and I can honestly say that, you know, I have nothing but the utmost respect for his patriotism, his services, and also for his ethics. I really can't express enough how much I feel fond of him and all the activities and everything that he's done for and in our country.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, I'm fortunate enough tonight to have a young IT specialist here that's going to help me with the presentation of the program. Mr. Marston, how do we do that? Does he have a button or something to push?
Mr. Heavens got you over here.
Okay. Come on.
Hello, hello?
This is Mr. DeWood, Jr.
How's it going? Warm regards to the county board supervisors and hello to everyone that came here tonight. Just to get everything started, I made a small presentation to show visually and audibly myself about the information of all the facilities being built, the processes, and address some of the concerns by the local community. We can start off, so each self-contained modular unit is heavy-duty hoist and meat rail hanging system, skinning cradle, wastewater collection system, electric water heater, and as you can read, it goes on all the way to drainage, refrigeration, waterproof, electrical, and other installed equipment, all under USDA inspection. To give you the full rundown, these facilities aren't just something that we're building hand-by-hand, but inspected, checked upon, and reinforced in every kind of way. If we could hit the next slide, please? So we're going to show you about three different units that are going to be installed. Starting with the first one is the meat processing unit. As you can see from all the bullet points, there's things in there such as any normal meat processing facility we have, is things such as your stunning box, your lifting hoist, your dehydrer, your wash basin. It's a very hygienic, clean, and healthy slaughtering system, stainless steel all throughout with pneumatic platforms, strong main support chassis, sorry, insulated sandwich panel walls, long operating life, and wastewater collection system. About the container itself, I want to answer a question, is these containers are not your average containers that you see on a regular basis. They come with a strong base and pillars built in. They're about 40 feet in total. So it goes about nine by eight, and they're not extending any longer than that. It comes with state-of-the-art equipment, top-of-the-line hygienic systems, and the process I'll explain after I explain the units. I want to explain the second unit. If we go to the next slide, please? We have the cold storage unit, the second out of the third one. This is your practical and functional storage via mobility. We have twin rail lines, meat hooks, cooling units, sandwich insulated panels. We have long operating life. This is pretty much where the meat will be kept, to keep the life in it, to keep the preservatives and keep everything from the meat going bad. This is another unit, same thing as the same size as the first, 40 feet. And as you can see, it can be moved to any location, but of course, it'll be in that one location. We have insulated sandwich panels and doors to prevent heat, moisture, and energy loss. And it can store different types of animal carcasses, and this will be the second out of the third. Can we hit the next slide, please? So the last one we have is the deboning unit. This is your practical and functional process with mobility, just as the first two, very hygienic, very clean, and healthy meat processing. It has a sustainable cold chain and longer shelf life via air conditioning and packed meat cold room. Insulated sandwich panels and doors prevent heat, moisture, and energy loss, just as the first cold unit. We have things such as your meat processing tables, twin rail lines, meat hooks, packed meat cold room, wash basin, vacuum packaging machine, packaging table and scale, four channels and grids. To give you a little breakdown of the process itself with all these three, how these processes work is, the process begins with an animal entering the stunning box where it'll get processed, and after, it will be laid on the veterinary control platform, which will wait for the USDA inspector, who will have the final decision to stamp it and approve it for consumption. It will get sent out afterwards. The waste will be put in a 20-gallon disposer in the cooler room until the next day, when the compost waste company will arrive and pick it up. They will also drop the bins back cleaned off and sanitized for the next processing day. The whole process enclosed and will not cause any destructive noise, no noise pollution, no smell, and vision to the outside eye. And to the answer the concerns about any of the traffic, there will only be one, maybe two, delivery trucks that will be processing after the meat is processed, will go and deliver these off to the stores that the meat is supposed to go to. So there'll be no more traffic than that. And if we hit the next slide, please? These are one of the machines that'll be installed into the hygienic transition unit. This is the fully automatic hygienic transition unit four with a, sorry, the unit four blush. It doesn't allow any passage without disinfecting the hands and cleaning the soles of the feet. It provides non-contact disinfection and sanitization with the help of IP-67 protective sensors. These are pretty much, as you can read, made with the top-of-the-line equipment to make sure that when someone enters and leaves, that is the cleanest they can be, and none of the meat is ever tainted or any type of bad pollution is caused that leaks outside. As for the, if we hit the next slide, if you don't mind? The animal shelter, we wanted to just mention this too. There'll be, of course, the dimensions of a rushi metal paddock, loading chute, composite paddock floor. Your shelter dimensions go about 2,000 square feet, which is 1,000 square feet length and then 1,000 width. There's the main support steel construction paddock of about 10 to 20 meters. And then, if we could go one more time, please? And then, there'll be a mesh fence. The farm will be secured by a 4,000-foot mesh fence that's seven-foot high in height and 16-foot doors and 450 posts. This will be in the back of the farm, the area where the animals are kept, so the animals are enclosed, encapsulated with along the storage units. So just a couple notes, because I wanted to get to the presentation first, so we can just get to this. The presentation is pretty much over with, but some of the questions that are answered about is a septic system. An alternative septic system designed by the engineer Alwyn Davis is part of the company on-site soil evaluations, is going to be put in there for the septic system for all those. One of the biggest issues we heard about is the odor control. So for odor control, we have different, different methods that will make sure that none of the odor ever gets out or even has a chance of getting out, things such as, of course, cleaning and scrubbing, water-based detergent cleaning, removing water soluble melodors, and to some extent, non-water soluble melodors. Of course, things that, we have ozone generator air purifier, which will clean the air and make sure that nothing, any odor gets out. Of course, sanitization, oxidation, absorption, odor neutralization, odor neutralization, and encapsulation. These facilities that you saw, none of these will be open air or kept out. They'll be in these storage units by themselves, and when they get from one to the other to the other, it doesn't even go out. There's a chute that connects it, so the whole process from one to two to three is encapsulated, so virtually no odor will come out. But to even on top of that, there will be measures to make sure that all these odors are kept inside. And for the last thing about the animal shelter, one thing we're doing, the animal shelter is four feet above the ground to avoid health issues for the animals. When the animal is kept in an area where they're on the ground, they defecate all over the area, which is to come. The issue with this is that when the remains are left there in certain seasons such as summer, where it is hot, the remains get certain insects that will harm the animals, help, and make it sick. We made the plan to go four feet above the ground, which will solve the issue and keep the animals safe and healthy. To add another point, the FSA Warsaw office will come and collect the waste and give it to other farms to use as fertilizer. So talk about reduce, reuse, and recycle. Just giving some information about what's going on, and that's all I have to say. Thank you guys so much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
I tell you, he's pretty. By the way, I forgot to tell you, I ran into Henry Lane Hall on the way here. I told him that I was going, and he said, "Well, please tell Mr. Haney and the board that he's very proud of his board of supervisors." And he says, "He sends his good wishes to you on that." The one thing that Mr. DeWood did not really address was, this will be a bell a million-dollar investment for him. It was, it will also... It was, it will also generate about a million and a half gross, we hope, in the first year. So it's bringing, and it will, and we will have approximately eight to ten employees. It, it, it is a spotless facility. A halil word means that it's been approved, that, that the animal has been killed very sweetly as you can kill somebody, with, with all due respect. And actually, a prayer is said on the animal before, before he's slaughtered. But it, this is not a huge slaughterhouse. This really truly is a meat processing plant. Mr. Dawood has reached out to the neighbors. He's gone to the trailer park beside him and knocked on doors and talked to people, and he hoped that he could satisfy them, but sometimes it's hard to talk to a few people. But we intend to be good neighbors. He has every intention of bringing his family here. This gentleman, this gentleman over there will make great new residents of this county and be real assets to them. The, um... So I think we've been really addressed pretty clearly that there's no environmental impact here. There is no runoff anywhere. We've got a state-of-the-art septic system that will be installed. We have a waste company ready to go and pick up the waste daily, not, not weekly or monthly, but daily, and while it's, while the waste is being stored overnight in a cooler, so no odor from that can get out. And Mr. Dawood has installed a, or will install, an air filter filtration system that kills the odor. We, we know about odor from Omega, you know? So we, we're very aware of that, so we're trying to cover that issue. The, uh, I covered the income, possible gross. Do we have any questions that, that I haven't really addressed or any concern?
Any board members have any questions?
You said you talked to...
You say you know about odor, so what do they know?
Ma'am, hold on just a minute, please. Does, any board members have any questions?
You say you, you talked to several of the neighbors? Yes, sir. We, we did reach out, and hopefully we have prevented some of them not to come tonight.
Approximately how many, approximately how many did you talk to?
I didn't hear you, sir.
Approximately how many neighbors did you talk to? How many neighbors are here tonight that have been talked to? All right. How many neighbors are here that have not been talked to?
I don't feel...
All right?
Oh, boy.
All right.
We, we are willing to talk to them, Judge.
It seems to me you've talked to many people.
That's right.
All right. Any other questions from the board before I open the public hearing?
Okay, sir.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Brand.
Tomlin, you want to go first?
I don't care.
You're what district, you can go first.
No. All right. Talked a little bit about traffic, and I believe a young man said it was going to be a couple of trucks a day.
Well, what, as we process the meat, we will store it and then deliver it to various customers.
Okay.
We will do that between six and nine in the morning.
Okay.
We only have two trucks.
So, but the animals have to be delivered?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's additional traffic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your fence, is that a security fence? Is that going to be a fence to contain the animals?
I think it's both.
Okay. But the waste from animals is going to be on the ground?
The...
Within that fence?
Could we go back to that slide, tech guy? See what the animals will be on?
And that whole four thousand square foot fence?
Four thousand square foot is around the whole facility.
Okay.
Not just where the animal, this is where the animals will come off the truck and go, and the waste product will go in there. We've made arrangement to get it out under that.
Okay.
Because that's four feet.
And I got ahead of myself a little bit. How many animals will be there at one time?
It's hard to say. It's whatever the farmer brings us. It could be ten, it could be twenty, but I don't think it's more than that.
And I guess the, the point I was getting at is, all animals will be on an elevated platform like that, so all the waste will drop below?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it'd be no animals, per se?
What we may do, I, I, I may say this, we've got twenty-four acres. We may breed alone animals, like we're entitled to in agricultural, so we, we may have animals early in the pasture. Right now it's soybeans, but we intend to have pasture. So when the complex is finished, we will have pasture land, we'll have a four-bedroom home, and we'll have this income-producing asset.
Okay. That's all I have for them.
Oh, yeah.
Tom? Mr. Brand asked, asked one question about the traffic with animals getting there. That was one of them.
You said, where is the product going to be sold?
Well, we, we will have a retail facility in this facility, so that you can come buy fresh meat at a much lower price, because it, it's, the, the farmers will love it, because right now, they have to go four hundred miles or more to Pennsylvania to process their cattle, so the farmers here in Lake...
They have to go four hundred miles to Pennsylvania? There are places in Virginia they process?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. Do you think it's Smithfield?
Well, Smithfield, that's their own company, but they don't...
I know, but there are the places that you can search that process meat in Virginia.
Mr. Tomlin, I'm not going to argue with you, sir.
No, I'm not arguing, I'm speaking the fact.
I know you know more than I know.
No, I don't, but I don't know four hundred miles to go to a place...
Well, I know, I know the Buffalo Farm in Lancaster County has to go to Pennsylvania.
Maybe they're going for something very specific.
I know that Mr. Hayden Garland has to go four hundred miles to Pennsylvania. He says that's the closest place that you can go. So if, if there is another one closer than four hundred miles, I don't know about it.
Maybe they only handle small stuff.
Uh... No, Mr. Tomlin, let me correct you, sir. This is USD certified plants.
Any, any meat that is sold to the public has to be certified either by the state, which is also USDA certified program.
All right.
I mean, you, you, nobody can sell meat to the public without it being certified to be safe.
Sir, right here in this county, there's a processing plant that does deer, that does different wild game.
It's in York County, Lancaster, by the way.
Okay.
It's just across, across, you go across the road.
I guess it is.
Courthouse Road, yeah.
I guess it is, yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, so then if you're going to have a retail plant, then you're going to have more traffic there, too. So everything you're saying is more traffic added along the way. The product that's not sold to the public retail, where is it going?
To restaurants throughout the state. And I'm sure locally, once, once they know that you can buy it here cheaper.
You finished, Tom?
You, you've got some pretty good restaurants in this county.
You got the waste truck, you got the farmer coming in, you got the waste truck, you got customers coming in, you got freight, uh, freight deliveries. You finished, Tom? It's more than just two, more than just two vehicles per day?
Well, you know, the conditions that have been set on the application, we, we, we can meet very easily, as you've seen. If you want to put a condition that we can't have ten vehicles on the property in any one day...
Robert, put up their conditions.
While they're being put up, Mr. Morrison, since this is A1, they could grow livestock without any additional permitting process required, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought, just wanted to make sure.
You finished, Tom?
Yes.
Uh, my biggest concern, all the people that you haven't, say you talked to some, but my Lord, the number that stood up was amazing that you haven't talked to.
Mr. Long, a gentleman actually called Mr. Dawood and said that he would set up a meeting, was it Monday night?
Yes, sir.
Monday night, and bring the neighbors out. He came all the way down here from Fairfax to meet with those neighbors. Nobody showed up.
Were they contacted?
And the contact said he had a cold and couldn't come out.
How many of you were contacted? Raise your hand.
They were not.
Yeah, I think they were.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, how many people were contacted for the meeting? Raise your hand.
No, 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 no. This is...
No, no. How many people were contacted to be at the meeting?
Not this meeting, but a meeting to meet with the gentleman that is proposed in this lot of us.
No one was contacted.
Judge, I, what I, I don't want to mislead you, but saying, we tried to contact every letter in opposition. I've gotten those letters, and Mr. Dawood did contact those folks, and, uh, and I know that. So we, we didn't go where...
Hold on just a second.
Did the whole community call for a meeting, like maybe we should. And if I tell them we're issued, I certainly won't.
It's up to them. They might want to talk to them.
Oh, we gotta, we gotta have more information. Yeah, we got a public hearing yet. All right, any other comments from the board or questions?
No.
Before I open the public hearing?
Right, quite a few people. We know that.
Uh, Mr. Haney, Mr. Dawood himself say something.
Yes? Yes, sir.
Mr. Supervisor, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak up. I was kind of a little sick, so, yes, sir. I went several times, I spoke with the, the neighbors that I've seen them, I went and knocked the door, and one of the neighbor even...
Ladies and gentlemen, please keep it down, we cannot hear the speaker.
So I, I tried to, to speak whoever's I kind of, you know, met them. Couple of them was not available, and I went to neighbor to neighbor and spoke with them that day. Then the next day, I went to, spoke with Mr. Mike, the owner of, uh, Mobile Home Park. He said, yes, come over, and then I went to his mechanic shop and spoke to them, I gave them everything. He said that, uh, he have nothing against that, but some of them, those people that are living in there, they, they have an issue with that. And then from there, I came into, I was looking for my cross street, Mr. Kenny, and I explained to him, and he said, oh, you built it here. I said, no, it's all the way at the back, it's not right here. He said, I heard that you putting a slaughterhouse right here, meat processing right here, six thousand square foot of facility. I said, no, it's nothing like that, it's in a forty-feet container, and this is the picture, and this is my, you know, proposal. And he checked it, he said, oh, okay, we thought that was, was a difference, and we, you know, awful and bloods and all those things. And then he said, you know what? You come back on Monday. There was another lady that passed by from, uh, from the trailer park, and I tried to introduce, I said, I'm your neighbor, but I think she didn't want to talk to me. So he said that she went to North Carolina, and them and a couple of others, come on Monday around six o'clock, and, and I will arrange them and he will speak to them. So I came at six PM on, on Monday with two of my friends that's sitting in here, and he came out, he said, I'm sick, I have a flu, so don't come closer to me. You can go to, uh, he pointed to go to Lila Smith's house, the other, Lila, the neighbor, I said, I already spoke with her. And what about the ones that was in Mobile Home Park? He goes, no, you can go to your cell, you go on the second row, there's a, um, on the right-hand side, you see Mercedes, they're, they're truck. And it was getting darker, uh, it was about like a, almost seven, seven thirty. I went inside, but I didn't feel like it'd be a right way to just go and knocking on people's door. And then I called Mr. My lawyer attorney, and then I said, okay, it's, it's too dark, it was supposed to be, he was supposed to be coming in and speaking with the, with the neighbor. There, and the second thing about the USDA certified, uh, facility, and I'm sure you guys know, but I just wanted to explain to you that any meat that you wanted to sell to a restaurant or to the, um, a meat shop, this has to be USDA certified, not the custom one, and then it's a, it's a totally two different facility. Northern Maryland County, as long, as far as I searched, I have not heard that there is a USDA certified facility. There is only one, which is a custom, they do deers, and if I bring it mine once, and then, and then we'll do it. Another thing is, this facility is moved, it's a forty-feet container. Originally, this is made for, to you go farm to farm. And it's only fourteen of those that are, that are made in, in the United States, even though, probably the government is pushing to save money for the farmers to take them. But the current gas prices and all those things, you know, everything is so expensive, it will get expensive for the, uh, farmer to, you know, to process, so I kind of think it, why not have put it here, uh, on the spot, and if someone willing to come. Regarding the store that is on, on three sixty, the Northern Neck Farm, I personally, our main, the customer, the stores that I spoke with, I mean, Richmond and other, other areas as well, to, uh, to, they will call me and say, hey, I need a, this is much meat, and I will process that, and the next day we deliver it. Most of them workers, them, but here, if anybody, the other farmer, or, you know, the community, that they wanted to, to process their cattle or any small animal, we, we will gladly do for them with a fee. But our main goal is to, you know, get the order and then take that order to, to their, to their stores, so there will be no traffic. Regarding the animal, animals, we will be getting it from auction, from local distributors, probably once in, uh, once in a two week. One time trucking coming in and dropping off and, and then leaving. But we promise, is one of them the best facility I was looking for, it took me eight months. I met in the expo of those manufacturer, it's a European manufacturer, and they, they making that, and, and all is a glenozite, deep heart glenozite steel that they put it in there, they'll never go rust, and all the equipments that are in and there, it's all very nice, automatic, like, you know, cutting saws, others, taking skin out and all those. Regarding the, the treasures.
The one thing I would say to y'all, Mr. Tomlin especially, we'll get rid of the retail store. If the traffic is, is, if you think that's going to create the traffic, we don't have to have that on, on this twenty-four acres. We, we can put that in the whole commercial place in Calio, maybe even. But, so, that really, the traffic really is not an issue. The, 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 it's, it really won't be.
How do you feed this system? I mean, you need to have enough cattle brought in, or whatever livestock you're using, to keep the seven or eight people working all the time, unless you're going to do it in such small increments. How is that business-wise?
They bring the cattle in from the auction, put it in a very clean facilities that they'll be kept, and they can't process them all in one day, day, and clean the place and do everything they have to do in eight hours. That's the other thing, this place is not going to be operating twenty-four hours a day. It's going to be operating approximately eight hours a day. So with the eight hours a day week, four hours of it will probably be clean, and four hours of it will probably be processing. So it's, uh, the other difference in the, the four hundred mile radius thing that Mr. Garland, Hayden Garland told me about, is, um, it's halil, it's kosher. That, that, that's a different processing plant altogether.
Oh, that's a different ballgame.
Yeah.
If you're looking for something that specific, yes, you may have to travel.
Yeah.
But when you throw out a statement, they got to go four hundred miles for meat processing, once you narrow it down, I can understand that.
I, I really report, I'm only reporting with Mr. Garland, Hayden Garland told me, that he had to go to Pennsylvania to get his...
If he's doing a specific process of slaughter...
Appreciate it, I would ask for a private vote. We will, we will definitely do this, conditions that Mr. Philip has given us, and if you don't want us to have a retail store, and that sort of all give us traffic, put that on as a condition, no retail business, and we can, we can live with that. But this is an opportunity to bring a... But, this is an opportunity to bring a fabulous family to this county. A patriotic family that loves America, that wants to build a four bedroom house in front of this very facility. Would like to put a few guys there in the past themselves, and just be a positive, taxpaying member in this community, and wants to vote here, so he can vote for all of you. Thank you for hearing us.
You finished, Tom, you finished, Tom?
And just remember that y'all have seen what it really is, that's what it is.
All right.
Another concern on earth was that part of this facility is going to be three feet in front of a man's house, by a man's house. The closest we will come to any line is three hundred and seventy-four feet. And if you want to make it a little bigger than that, we can do it. But, we have no, no intention of going to anybody's house, but three feet, I can tell you that.
Let me, let me ask a question, you finished?
Yes, sir.
The number who stood up, the number of people who stood up, have your concerns been asked?
No.
No.
To see, we still have quite a few people that-
Well, let's hear it, we see-
I think we need to move forward with the processing, let them-
How long, how long would it's going to take you to process one cow, or one steer?
Sir, the facility is, has all of those automatic machines, like carcasses cutting, feet cutting, taking automatic skin, it's not hand. The capacity, the manufacturer is saying eight to ten cats a foot hour, and from fifteen to twenty sheep a hour.
Okay.
If we wanted to move that fast, there is a capital for that.
Okay, all right, that's what I was looking for. All right, all right, I'm going to open, open the public hearing now.
Right, four minutes.
Uh, everyone will be given four minutes to speak. First person is Thomas Hudnall.
How's my man? Well, good evening, boy.
How you doing, sir?
I'm, I got nothing to say on this business here, I can see and understand your concerns. I'm not for it, I'm not against it, but however, because I came up at a time where seventy-five percent of what I ate, we either raised or we grew, so I know what goes into it. That being said, if, me personally, I'm speaking for myself, if I can go there and get cheaper meat, then yes, I'm for it, that part. Because Tom answered that a while ago, whether it's going to be retail, okay? I don't have a problem eating meat that someone has slaughtered, because all of it's been slaughtered.
That's right.
But, yard meat is better than what we're getting in the store, because it's shot up with a whole lot of chemicals. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next person to speak is Shirley Stewart.
Those names are-
Ma'am?
No, she's not speaking.
She's not here now, okay.
And not the next person either.
All right, next one is Alvin Thompson, I think he-
I'm sorry.
No, Alvin's right here, Alvin, you want to speak?
No.
All right, Pat McCoy?
Right here.
You would like to speak, ma'am?
No, I'm not going to.
All right. Next person is Tamara Mears.
Hey, raise that mic. Right, you got it?
Everybody's saying that this and that, but where's the guy that's supposed to run this business? Where's he at? Don't you think he should have been here at the beginning of it? Who? You own, you're the one that's going to own this place? Okay, well, the biggest thing is, is all the traffic from even-
Ma'am, you need, you need to address us.
Address the board.
You're here to speak to us, okay?
Well, I just want to know where all this traffic and the pollution from that, going in and out, and keeping the smell from all these places, from this place. What's that, where's that going? You're saying that you got all this new stuff and all that crap? How do we know that it's not going to pollute our area that we live in? Can you prove they won't do that? I'm asking. Ain't nobody proving anything of that. So, what are we supposed to do? Stand by and let this guy do it, and have the smell coming in the old counties, the whole neighborhood here, that all these people live in? You're saying that it don't smell? I don't think so, I think it's going to smell, come on.
I don't know, ma'am, I do not know.
And that's right, nobody knows. But I've been to a murder farms at, and how it smells, it's been overdone, where we, where all these animals are. It don't smell good, and we got, we got to live in that. So, can you tell me if this place ain't going to smell up the house, smell up our neighborhood?
All right.
Okay.
You have time to comment again, sir.
Not right now?
Not right, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, what else, what are we going to do? We can't have somebody living right behind, my daughter lives right there, and that's right in front of this place, it's real big, right beside it.
Yes.
My aunt now lives right across the street from where this class, this place is going to be. My father lives right there, my aunt lives there, this is a whole community of people that we don't want to smell that. We don't want the traffic. And you see, we got those kids, they got kids that live there. Even in all that trailer park over there, they got little kids that run around. And we're going to have to put up with all that animals and trucks and stuff going in this little community? There ain't thirty minutes, there ain't, that, the roads ain't even wide enough. The roads are like single bed, that's one road, you can't even, if you put two tractor trails, you couldn't get them past there.
Well, that's, that's state highway.
There ain't no state highways.
We don't have a thing to do with the state highways.
Two big trucks going through there, there ain't no way you can do it.
Your time is almost up. All right, sorry.
Everybody's answering, your question.
All right, next person on the list is Leela Smith.
These eyes are going to be bigger.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak against-
Would you state your name, please, for the record?
For me?
Would you state your name for the record?
Leela Smith, I live on Fruit Plain Road.
Yes, ma'am.
The slaughterhouse is going right across the road from me. They're showing the trailer park there, they're only showing one side of the road. On the other side of the road, we have additional families, homes, and our concern is our health. What it's going to do to our health to have a slaughterhouse there, to have the odor, the traffic. Again, what Timmy just said, that road's not equipped for trucks. I have pictures of runoff from a rain at my place, off the road. And this is right across from where they want to put a slaughterhouse. If you want to put it somewhere, don't put it in a residential area, we're in a residential area. You have people that walk, people that ride bikes, and it's a good community, but we don't need a slaughterhouse. That's all. I have eighty signatures on here, I took a petition around about people that wanted, people that was against it, thirty of them are from Fruit Plain Road. So, this is what I want to present to you.
All right, okay.
I'm done.
Ma'am, ma'am, do you need your pictures back?
No.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next person on the list is Gail Sorrell. Hello?
Hello, my name is Gail Sorrell, I stay on 594 Fruit Plain Road. And my question is, that road is like, when you coming in there, you can hardly drive, you have to get over on the other side, almost in a ditch, when somebody coming in that area. And I'm, my daughter got a real allergies, and I'll be going back and forth to doctor, and I don't want all of this coming this area, had me in back and forth to doctors again. And it's just not the place for you to be in that neighborhood, because it's really too many people in that community that stay in there, that, you know, it couldn't be anywhere else size there. And I'm against it, because that area has got low land, some areas down there. If you go, you might get stuck right down, going down in that area. And answer that I have for that, if that's a low area back down in the area where the villain, and when they run off and, you know, do the slaughterhouse and all the blood and all of that, get into the, and the septic or stream of that area. And I'm understanding that, that's a zoning, villain zoning area for septic tanks, that we have to send in every five years to make sure our land is in place, you know, for the water system and everything, septic tank, so, you know, I felt like, you know, you shouldn't have that in that kind of area right now, you know. Anyplace else would be good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank God.
Thank you. All right, next person on the list is Bob Kane.
I think he signed up in the wrong spot.
Yeah, I think he did, he's, he's gone.
He gone.
All right, James Sorrell?
My name is James Sorrell, I live on Fruit Plain Road. And I understood everything this gentleman here said a while ago, but your family is welcome. If you want to put a full story home in the neighborhood, you're more than welcome. Before bringing that slaughterhome in our neighborhood, I'm against it. Because I have a shallow well, I have grandkids. My kids and all do not need to be involved in this type of community. Virginia needs to step up to the plate and stop letting all this stuff come in the neighborhood, just like from New York, DC, all that stuff that's coming to Virginia. What is we here, some big suss school? We need to step up to the plate and put a stop to this stuff. I'm telling you, it's dawned too far. I mean, if he wants to bring his family and his home here, yes, he's more than welcome. But, all that other stuff need to stay wherever it is. We do not need to wake up smelling that every day, dealing with the traffic coming through the neighborhood. It's two bottoms in our neighborhood, one over on Guardians Mill Lane Road, and one coming through on Valley Drive and Givens Road. Them trucks going to have to come in between them three entrances to get to this place. And neither one of them roads are wide enough for trucks to be coming in with canned frozen meat, bringing livestock in. The roads ain't going to stand, because when we just passing all their cars, we got to slow down, because you open, over on the grass in the ditch. And what you going to do when you meeting all them trucks all day long? And it's going to be more than two trucks a day. Yes, when y'all first built it, it might not be no smell. But after five years or ten years, as stuff going there, you're not going to keep the maintenance up on everything like that, that you're not going to smell it. So, sooner or later, it's going to be a hazard to our neighborhood, and I'm against it.
All right, thank you. All right, next person is Monica Johnson.
Hi, I am Monica Johnson, I stay on Guardians Lane. I have a lot of health issues, and I do not need more hazards coming into the little town I call home. There are school buses, combines, tractor trailers, bigger trucks, and we also have Amish that stay within the little neighborhood. There's horses and dogs and cattle already here. I am all for it for bringing in more family. There should not be a slaughterhouse on a small area with small families that have children and elderly people there that may have health issues that need the fire department or a rescue squad coming there, because the roads are very small, and kids ride their bikes, they play, when it snows, they go out to the field, I've seen it before. There's no space for it in such a small area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person is Thelma Gray.
Hi, my name's Thelma Gray, and my husband owns the trailer park, and I'm the property manager of the trailer park. I'm there pretty much on a daily basis. I treat my residents like they're my family. I have spent a ton of money on investing and improving the trailer park. I want to say thank you for your service, but your character is not the question here. The question here is, we have a community that we've worked hard on. We have families, we have elderly, we have children. I was raised by a butcher, I know a slaughterhouse. My, my residents' children don't need to hear the screaming of sheep. If sheep sense fear, they scream. I grew up with that, I know what it sounds like. My residents' kids don't need to go to bed by that. Sheep are more vocal at nighttime. If you want to bring your family, you're more than welcome. We welcome you, you want to have a farm, we are a farming community. There are, there's plenty of places to put a slaughterhouse. Find a commercially zoned place, not an agriculture place, with residents. We are a community, and we deserve to be heard. It's not about the dollars. "Oh, it sounds great, we're going to be, do this, and we're going to do that, and we're going to bring this much money in." It's not about the dollars. How much dollars are you going to cost us, because the roads are going to be crap? How much dollars are you going to cost, because I have a resident whose has cancer, he's fighting for his life. How can you say that you're not going to affect him? I got residents that have small children. I already have residents tell me they're moving. I went to, I went to the same, this property was purchased at auction. You didn't come down here and say, "Oh, I love this area, and I want to move here." No, you went to an auction, just like we went to an auction, and we bought a piece of land because it was cheap. And you didn't think that we would stand up and say, "No, not in our community." And yes, who they're talking about is me, that whole telephone, or whatever you referred it to. I didn't say nothing bad about you, I put the ads on the radio. I encouraged everybody to come, speak your mind. I sat out there and asked people to sign up, I didn't say, "Only sign up if you're against it, only sign up if you're for it." I said, "Sign up and speak it," so that the- I said, sign up and speak, so that the candidate, so you guys could hear what everybody wanted. We are a community here, we are tight-knit here, and the fact that, I could have brought my attorney here to speak for us, I'm here, I'm speaking. I'm asking you guys, don't allow it. Please, do not allow it. It does not matter, you can promise the world, but promises, we all know are made to be broken. And I don't want to be that person, saying, I'm so sorry, because our neighbor does not have any common courtesy for us. I'd like to be a good neighbor for him, to him. When he first brought the property, and he came down, he told, he didn't say nothing about a slaughterhouse. Oh, I'm gonna bring my family, I'm gonna raise some sheep and some goats. I told all the residents, oh, the farm's going in next door, it'd be fine. I kick myself in the butt every day, because I should have bought that property at auction. I should have went up against them, and it wouldn't have been about a dollar sign, it would have been about the point. Because I went up against Alan Allen and Alan, who wanted the property at auction, and I didn't back down from them, because their comments were, everybody was getting kicked out, and that they would put new, new ones in, where the people owned the trailers, and they just got their lot rent. Paid way more than I wanted to.
Time's up ma'am. All right, uh, next person is Michael Shanks.
Good evening, board, as you know, my name is Mike Shanks, and I'm the proud owner of the, uh, Trailer Park Y, and I had no idea it was cheap at an auction, like my wife said. Um, boy, what a nightmare it's been, and I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, I absolutely hate it, my wife loves it, that's the only reason we still got it, we're still going with it. I got the pleasure to meet Mr. Dave, uh, Dave Wood, I believe it is, the other day. We, we had a couple, uh, meetings to sit down and talk, and every time he ended up sick, well, we finally sat down the other day and talked, and I thought, wow, this guy, he's got a lot of money, he's, uh, putting in this million dollar operation on this, uh, I think it was sixty-eight thousand dollar piece of property. I thought, wow, man, that's pretty awesome. But then I, he, he showed me all the stuff, and they got put a graphic of the sheep laying on the side, and heads being cut off, and things like that, and he showed it to me. I thought, well, it's, it'll be inside, it's kind of clean, but, had five residents tell me, hey, we're moving out. If, if this thing comes next door, we don't want our kids to see this, and we're moving out. And, thinking in my head, ding ding ding, hopefully this thing comes next door, they all move out and actually property. But then, thinking on my wife's behalf, I hope this thing doesn't come next door, I hope all of my residents stay. Because I guess it's a love-hate relationship, though he's coming to spend a million, I've already spent a million, a million plus, I can show it to you. And, a lot more to spend, and I'm not getting this money back, never. Park's not worth it, everybody here knows, it was a terrible investment on my part. What was another sixty thousand dollars to buy that piece next door? Really, it was nothing, at the time. Should have bought it, should have did like him and bought it, but, I didn't. So, in this trailer park that I love to hate so much, we had a lot of little kids. My wife just spent twenty-five thousand dollars buying a playground, to put out back by the pump house. We haven't got permits for it yet, because still ready to kick her over it. So, um, we, we would like to put up a playground, but it's kind of hard for the kids to play on playground, watching sheep and goats, knowing they getting ready to go in that building and get their heads covered. You know what I mean? I'm, I'm just being honest with you, how, how disturbing would that be to a little kid? You know, I, I wouldn't let my kids grow up like that, certainly know you all want it. And, and, Mr. Dave is a nice guy, he served four terms in Iraq. I only did one term in Desert Storm. You know, and it, it was, there was twenty-four Marines killed, I was lucky to be here, I got the scars to show it. Um, so, I appreciate his service. But, uh, if y'all can please take into consideration, this is not the place for it. These roads can't handle it, the trailer park can't handle it, our soil can't handle it, we are already fighting, we are already fighting septic issues. So, I don't know if y'all have ever owned a septic truck, I just had to buy one, because I gotta have it pumped twice a week, you know, or twice a month, couple different ones. So, trying to get that handled, but, hard to do when you already made something in a park that's worth, what, a two hundred grand? Anyway, thank y'all for your time, please vote no.
Thank you. Next person to speak is Charlotte Muse.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Charlotte Muse, and I live on, um, 106 Plain Lane, on Fruit Plain Road. Um, we're talking about putting this slaughter yard, it's right across from my trailer, where I stay at. Um, we really don't want a slaughter yard there, not by us. We already have issues with buzzers hanging around. We worry about our water system. They say that, not with the blood, where is all the blood gonna go? They say it's gonna be contained, but we don't know that. We don't want to be drinking that, we don't want the smell, we just don't want it. And like to say, the roads, with the Amish horses and stuff, when we get behind them, we can't pass them, so we have to creep along behind them, which I don't mind that. But it's nowhere for, if you get over too far, the ditches are deep, you'll go over in the ditch. It's just not big enough for all the extra traffic. And just imagine, tractor trailers on that road, it's an accident waiting to happen. So, that's all I got to say, I thank you for your time.
Thank you ma'am. Next person is Darrell Shaw.
Hello, I'm Darrell Shaw. Yeah, I live on the corner trailer, that's gonna be the closest to area, I think. And so, I'd rather not listen to all the animals screaming, you know, at nighttime, because they're gonna be in small pens, they're not like, gonna be in the pasture, you know, where they could go around. You know, like, they said they were gonna put cows in there too, in the pasture, which is fine, that's farmland. But when you can find the animal into a small cage, all they're gonna do is scream. So, I'd rather not see a slaughterhouse there. And that's, that's about it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Robert A. Rose.
Joe.
Hello.
Robert A. Rose, 260 Fruit Plain Road. I agree with, uh, almost everything everybody here has said tonight, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Sorrell, young lady in the back. Also, something I never thought about, which is a, a big concern, is, is the Amish community there, in the, in our community. One concern, which has been brought up tonight, this gentleman says he can build this plant for a million dollars, and hopefully make, or have one point three, one point five, the following year. Good for him, great. But, as any business gets bigger, we all know, they need more, and they need more, and they cut corners. When you start cutting corners, things start to leak, retaining, retaining tanks start to leak. Well, we'll fix that later. Where's all that blood and bio, all that stuff gonna go, it's gonna go in the ground. The platform that they showed that the animals are on, that's gonna catch some of the solid waste, and it's gonna be four feet off the ground. What happens to the waste that seeps through? They will pull that grate up and clean all that out. And one other thing that concerns, should concern us all, is our property values. You know, some people may want to sell their homes, some people may want to buy in there. When they find out that there's a slaughterhouse down the road, and eventually, there's gonna be problems, it's inevitable. What happens to your property values? Nobody's gonna want to buy a home on Fruit Plain Road, next to the slaughter plant. These are just some ideas that I've been kicking around, and again, I agree with a lot that everybody has said here tonight. And, uh, Ms. Smith, if you need one more signature on your petition, I will get it tonight. That's it, thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you. Next person is Brundell Davis.
I guess I should say good night, because it's almost nighttime, for most people. I'm Brundell Davis, I live on 542 Fruit Plain Road. And, it's nothing personal against Mr. Dave Wu, or Dave Wood, however you pronounce his name. It's too much traffic, as it is on that little road, I know VDOT has control of that, you all don't. We don't need trucks added to it, more than what's farm trucks that are going on there right now. We don't need the possibility of pollution. I have a lot of health concerns, also, like, uh, the other lady was saying, her daughter does. I have many allergies, sometimes I can't go outside for months at a time, other than to go somewhere and come back home, because it does bother. Plus, it should be put somewhere that's not residential. I mean, residents don't need to have to live with that. I don't want to, I don't think I'm close enough to hear the sheep bawling and crying when they're slaughtered, but, I feel for the people in the trailer park, I wouldn't want to hear it ever. And what's gonna happen if all the trailer park empty's out, Mr. Gray, Ms. Gray, they're not gonna have an income. So they're gonna go under. The rest of us, as we get older, may have to sell our properties to afford nursing home care. And if that bottoms out, is Mr. Dave Wu gonna take care of us? Is he gonna step up and pay our, uh, nursing home bills? I hardly think so. We just don't need it, in our area. It has upset me and my husband considerably, thinking that that's going down, because it's, it's no way that eventually, it's not gonna leak out all sorts of vile things into our water economic system, ecosystem. We just don't need that. That's all I've got to say. I've got more to say, but y'all don't want to hear it.
All right, Thomas Davis. All right, good enough. Lance Marston.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gentlemen, my name is Lance Marston, and I live at 219 Long Point Road. And several of the residents in the area are members of Henderson's United Methodist Church. And they've asked me to come tonight, to perhaps summarize some of the concerns that they have. One has only to drive through that area, and see the substantial homes that exist there. People take care of their homes, they cut their grass, their homes are painted, and it's a nice residential, rural residential area. And this proposal has no place, no place there. There are many other places that are more suitable for this kind of commercial development. One has only to look at the demographics of this area, to see that there are elderly people there, but more importantly, there are many young youngsters and young people there. The road that this development would use, runs adjacent to the trailer park. And at the end of that road, is a school bus terminal. And there are young children out there, so you can imagine the conflict between large trucks going into this main road, which is adjacent to this school bus area. And the impact on the kids, for their safety. But there are many, so many things that have been touched on tonight. Much compelling evidence, it seems to me, that this board must take into account. The economics are distorted. This is a large development, by any standard. You can call it a portable slaughterhouse, if you want, but it does not belong in this twenty-four acre site, that sits in the midst of a rural residential area. That if you go down there and look at it, you say to yourself, these people care, these people care about their existence, and their livelihood, and their places where they live. It does not belong here. And I believe this board of supervisors must, must, if this is to go forward, submit this proposal to the planning commission for further study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next person is Monica Thompson.
Hi, um, I just want to say that I, I live on 43 Plain Lane, um, my mobile home is beside that field that, um, is right beside the field that, um, that we're talking about. When it rains, that water from that field runs right through my front yard, every time. So, we're worried about health concerns, when this, you know, um, there are, where's, it, it sounds good, but, I agree, after five years, or after this operation picks up, what are these inspections, is everything gonna be met? And, how can we, how can we ensure that there's not gonna be leakage, or that there's not gonna be pollution? I think it's, it's really hard to say. I just strongly oppose it, and I hope that, I hope that you vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Ronnie Brand.
Hi y'all, I'm Ronnie Brand. Uh, I've lived on Fruit Plain for thirty-eight years, uh, I'm on the upper end of it, I have tractor trailers, I can't hardly get in there, I'm sure a lot of these people here cuss me, because the roads ain't wide enough to meet me. Uh, so I know, we can't handle all this traffic. As Lori has stated, and the owner has stated, that, uh, they're only gonna get bigger. And I was raised on a dairy farm, you can't control the smell, I don't care how hard you try. He's already stated that, uh, some are being contained, they're gonna have pasture land for some. So where is all this going? So we're gonna have that. And I'm asking y'all to look around the room, this is almost all of the aftermains right here. We are speaking, let us go, please, we don't want it. Welcome, come move in, you're welcome to come. But we got other land for your business. I got a hundred acres of, a mile of wood, I'll say come. I've got 100 acres of, of my own wood, also.[597.16][597.16](Laughter)
All right. Next person is David Bran, Dave Brand.
Devin.
Devin Brand. All right.
My property is roughly 500 feet away from this back field. Mainly worried about the noise and the smell from the animals, the pasture itself. We have two major bottoms through there. I know he's got the taints, but if the animal is in a pasture, all that run off of waste has to go somewhere. So I know he's done a lot for the country. But as far as the community, he says he loves it and likes it here. But if he really wanted to get in touch with us to talk about this, he could have put papers in the mailbox about a meeting, any other way of getting ahold of us instead of just naming you pieces. But I'm against it.
All right. Next person is Shirley Coleman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Shirley Coleman. And I live on Fruit Plain Road. I'm a little bit nervous. And I have two nephews, a niece, and a sister that live on Fruit Plain Road. And I say no to a slaughterhouse on Fruit Plain. Fruit Plain looks like a residential area. The definition of residential is designed for people to live in, occupied by private houses, quieter traffic. A slaughterhouse is a business. What if there is an accident? They showed pictures, but actual videos of the process would have been good. So I'd like to know if ecological studies have been performed on what this can do to an area. I walk and bike on Fruit Plain Road. Just recently, they came and dug extreme ditches, where you could fall in the ditch in some areas if you get too close to the edge of the road. Imagine if huge trucks and trailers are passing by you. Fruit Plain is a back road made for local traffic. Our roads aren't paved like a main road. Only sectional or spot paving is done. Our roads cannot take continuous truck traffic. I travel an hour and 15 minutes each way to work in Glen Allen, because I choose to live on this country road that is slow-paced, quiet, and peaceful. So I say no to a slaughterhouse.[801.51][801.51](Applause)
My name's Ray Smith. I live at 38 Warren's Lane. I, I drove tractor trailer about 44 years off of Lake Paul, all over the country. You're not going to bring tractor trailers in this neighborhood to haul cattle and stuff out safely. There's no way. Because I brought my tractor trailer in, and I had to stop and wait for everyone to pass me. I couldn't just drive on through. And this slaughterhouse, it, what's it going to be? Now, you're talking now, when it's new. 10 years from now, is it going to be secure and not stink the whole neighborhood up? I'm saying in the future. They might put it up now and it'd be, be secure. But eventually, like every other slaughterhouse in the country, it'll, it'll, this, the smell, they'll overrun it. That's all I got to say. The roads need big enough for tractor trailers. And, and not, not, maybe not, maybe not this year. But 10 years, five years from now, 10 years from now, you won't be able to live in this neighborhood. Go to any place where they, they've put a slaughterhouse in, and it's been there for 10 years, and see how it smells. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Kristy Williams.
Hello. My name is Kristy Williams. I live on Warren's Lane, which is right off of Fruit Plain. I can sit on my front porch and see the view of this slaughterhouse. And it's not what I would like to do. I'm retired. I moved to this area 20 years ago, because it was a quiet and relaxing, and away from the cities and the businesses. This is a residential area, and I do not believe that a slaughterhouse is an appropriate place for it. The runoff, the drainage in this, in this area that we live in, the water backs up in all the yards on Fruit Plain Road. A lot of ladies, I mean, when you go around, you just see the water laying in the yards after a rain. So the drainage is terrible. The roads are narrow. They've come along, and they dug these ditches. And now, if you go too far over, you're going to need a tow truck to pull you out of these ditches along this road. There won't be no getting, getting out. The ditches, they've come along, and they've cleared up the drain so that, so the water would drain. But I'm telling you, something comes along, and you move over too far, you'll, you will be calling a tow truck to pull you out of that ditch. The roads are narrow. And my opinion is, there's a lot of places for a slaughterhouse. This is a residential area, and we don't need a slaughter. That's my opinion. And I hope and pray that you vote not to put it in. Thank you. And nothing against you guys. Like he said, he's got to keep the land for you, ready to go.[1047.82][1047.82](Laughter)
All right. Next person, Cynthia Hedley.
Hi. I'm Cindy Hedley. I live on Gardie's Mill Road. My woods eventually meet up to all the woods behind Fruit Plain Road, and then all those streams lead down to Gardie's Mill Pond. So I have a concern about the waterways. I have, I can relate. I feel really sad for the kids and the residents that are so close there. Growing up, I had an uncle that processed pigs. The smell was awful. The sounds from their house, even though it was at a distance, were horrific. I can still remember those. And the cleanup was a lot going on. And they're talking about using chemicals. I personally have multiple chemical sensitivities. So I feel in that way for the close resident that might have health issues and then have the cleaning chemicals added to that. I'm not sure what kind of chemicals they have. But polyethylene glycol is the number-one carcinogenic chemical that existed, that's used often in cleaners, that it actually puts me in an anaphylactic shock. So I couldn't imagine being so close by and having to possibly deal with that in addition to just like the regular odor of the place. So I, I would question what chemicals are being used in the cleaners. And Fruit Plain Road is just like Gardie's Mill Road. There's no line on the, the road. You can kind of get two cars past each other if you slow up for one another. It's a rural area, country back road. I grew up going around those, a lot of turns on that road. You know, on the school bus, they would always get on Fruit Plain Road before we'd go to Gardie's Mill. And I think a facility like this needs to be in a more industrial warehouse-type of location. Thank you.
My name's Tom Terrell. I live at 1737 Fruit Plain Road. I've heard a lot of commentary tonight that states problems in residential areas, problems with traffic, problems with school and kids. We've got the Amish there. So our community is here, folks. Fruit Plain Road's here, and our neighbors are here. This is not a place in residential area for a slaughterhouse. I'm against it, and I think you should vote no.
All right. Should be Mark Wing or Winn?
Mark Wing. Wife and I live in Loxburg, and we're not from the Fruit Plain area. And saw the, the information come up on Facebook on the, on this, and read all of the, the whole proposal. And looking at the satellite photos, it doesn't give you a picture of what goes on in that neighborhood as far as the residential areas. I've got a simple question from the board. Can you guys raise your hand and tell me how many of you have driven around that neighborhood and been down there? Okay. Well, at least you've got an idea of what it's like down there. The satellite photo doesn't tell the story. It's, 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 it's not a place for a slaughterhouse. It's just, it's just too much of a residential area. I realize it's zoned agricultural. It would be great for a small farm with a few goats and cows. But for a slaughterhouse, you know, it's, it's not the place for it. There's plenty of places in, in the rest of the county. Welcome into the county. You know, if you want to come and live here, it's a great place to live. We've been living here for four years now. We're, we came from Northern Virginia. We're...
Comments to us, sir. Direct your comments to us, please.
All right. Thanks. All right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Next person is Sue Laney-Wing.
Hi. My name is Sue Laney-Wing. I'm married to him. I live in Loxburg. I'm just here, past my bedtime, actually, on behalf of neighbors I've never met, because I read all the proposal. And we drove around to see the site and see what this was all about and what the concern was. And we agree that, we don't think it should be in a residential area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. My name's Lewis Blackwell. And I own a piece of property on Fruit Plain Lane. And it's not a place for a slaughterhouse. Because when I go to sell that property, it's going to lose its value, you know? And the area, I was raised, born in this area. I worked for Clifton Brand and all of them. All right? And I know Clifton, he certainly keek against this. He would mourn it. And he was a big-time farmer. But I'm saying, if a man from Northern Virginia wants to live here, it's fine. It's fine. We welcome him here. But we've got to think about the health of our neighbors and everything else, and our property values. You know, and I hear the man's name, Carl LeVett, talking about the slaughterhouse, was one of the Garland guys. And he's tending part of my property. So why don't he offer the part that he got on 360 for them to build a slaughterhouse? He's got a plant property. He got a cattle. He got cattle in the fence right behind the 711 on, on, on Givian Road. 411 for the slaughterhouse in his property. And he, he said he had to drive 400 miles to get slaughtered. He offered me the job to drive a Fensberg Keds cattle to get it slaughtered. So he didn't have to go no 400 miles to get no slaughtered. No, he wanted to get it slaughtered. And it's got a son that's got a meat packing, selling meat right over the place right now. So you, 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 as their lawyer, somebody ain't telling you the truth.
All right.
I'm against it.
I'm against it.
All right.
I'm 85 years old, and I don't want to finish my other 15 years smelling no slaughter.
Thank you. Next person is Heidi Thompson.
Good night, everybody. My name is Heidi Thompson. I live on Fruit Plain Road, and have been for the last 13 years. And I have children. Bike often on that road. I'm not going to beat the dead horse. The horse, we've already thought over all the reasons why we don't want to have a slaughterhouse. So I'm against it. And I thank you for hearing me out and hearing, seeing all of our community coming out to say, we don't want it, you know? We have enough already. We have buggies coming up and down the road. I love the Amish. But you add tractor trailers, and buggies, and bikes, it's going to be an accident at some point, and someone is going to get hurt. And so that's all I have to say, Laura. Thank you.
All right. Next person is Gary Heckley.
It's Heckley. K-E-C-K-L-Y.
Heckley. All right. Okay.
Sorry, sir. I'm a neighbor. I live over on Warren's Road. And again, I commend you for your service to the country. But that doesn't make any difference. This is, this is absurd. I, I don't believe we've been given complete information. I think the program is a little bit misleading at best. And I think that the main thing, aside from the health and the traffic, is already in this short period of time, what the term slaughterhouse is putting a pall over this whole project. You can call it meat processing. You can call it other things. But slaughterhouses already hurting people's property rights. People are already talking about having to sell property, and they'll never be able to get what they paid for it. It's too far gone. It's ridiculous. I'm against it.
All right. Next one is Geraldine Bluntson.
Geraldine Bolson.
Bolson. Okay.
And I live on Warren's Lane. I'm 48 years old. And I've listened to all this. I'm from Tappusville, Georgia. I live by three, you know, three houses that slaughtered. Chickens, hogs, and beef. You don't want, you don't need it. There's so many places to go to. There is not near residential areas in every state. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. That's all I have on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak?
She's already spoken.
No. You've already spoken, ma'am. I can only allow you to speak once.
Can I make a request on behalf of everybody that's told...
No, ma'am. All right. Anyone?
One hand, I can...
One hand right, right there.
Another one here.
Yeah. I got another one right there. Hold on just a second.
Hello. I'm Cheryl Thompson. Some of you know me. And there's him. Look, I live on Gardie's Lane, which comes off of Fruit Plain Road. From my home to where the site is projected to be is exactly one mile. As it is, my granddaughter spoke earlier, Monica Johnson. Monica has a hole in her lungs. Monica has heart conditions. I am a neighbor. I am a Navy veteran with a lot of health conditions. And I, basically, I'm allergic to a lot of things in nature. I cannot deal with the thought of having, and nothing against the business, we need the business. I don't fight, I just don't think we need this type. I think we could benefit more from another type of business that we can meet other community, bring income in. But this is not it. We are farming, waterman, community, manufacturing. We need a grocery store, not a slaughterhouse. We need something that will bring our community up, not tear it down. I don't want to lose value on my home, like everyone is saying. If they ever had to get up and sell their home, they're not going to get 50% of the value of it because of a slaughterhouse that may come to the area and stay and may be gone in 15, 20 years if it doesn't pan out. And there's always the option of a possible disaster. That's what they are, disasters. We don't see them coming a lot of times, but before we know they're coming, they're here in our face. And as they say, it's too many water rays here that stream to the Potomac, to the, grab a hand, and to the bay. All you need is that one drop of that contaminant and it's just going to spread and spread. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person right over here.
Hello, my name is Elijah, Elijah Wallace. I'm not from the community, I'm not going to lie and say that I am. I actually do live in the neighborhood with Mr. Dawood. He is pretty much familiar to me. I've known him since I was 11 years old. It's about half my life. I hear all the concerns with the processing plant and I don't disagree. It's all about our concern, I understand it with the community. I think there is chance to speak and find ways to work around issues and concerns, but I also don't know slaughterhouses. I'm not from here, I'm from up north. So maybe solutions could be found through conversation, through actual general or genuine communication within the community. And even if he did just come out here to communicate with y'all and see what he really could do to help y'all out and free y'all of mind, just overall, become part of the community. I love this man like a second father. I lost my father years ago to cancer. And he always shed on me. He always shed on my father, he always shed on us. His son Mohammed, I've known him since I was, again, 11 years old. One of my best friends. And he is good people, they are great people and great family. I love them, I trust them with my life, my nephew, my niece, my mom. I trust them with all of them. But again, I'm not from this community, I'm not going to lie and say that I am. Maybe there is room for communication. And if it's not a slaughter parent, that works, cool, I get it. Maybe there is a different place for it and a different time for it. And I'm not one to say what is or isn't suited for the community because I'm not from here. But I appreciate the feedback, the communication. And I hope regardless of what the outcome is, y'all do, except Mr. Dawood and the community. I love him like family. He's a great person. And regardless of consensus, thank y'all for coming out tonight. And I hope everything works out with the community, Mr. Dawood, the farm, and whatever comes from it. And that's my piece.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Savannah Bolson. I live on Warren's Lane, close to Fruit Plain. But my nieces and nephews live in that trailer park. And I'd rather not let them talk to me and tell me that, like, they're hearing animals die at night. Like, and I live on a farm, but we don't slaughter them. We keep them. And we raise them and we keep on going. And that's all I have to say. I just don't want it to happen.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to speak? All right.
Hi, my name's Janet Satterwhite. Some of y'all probably know me by sight. I'm always waving at everybody. My sister and I bought our property on Fruit Plain. And about 12, 13 years ago, and we planned on dying there. We love it up here. We love the nature and the neighbors. It's my little piece of heaven on earth and I'd like it to stay that way. So I'm saying please.
Okay.
No slaughterhouse.
All right. All right, the next gentleman.
Good evening, my name is Roz. And of course, I understand your concern and I have, I don't disagree with you. But I'm just here to-
I can't quite hear you, sir. Speak closely to the microphone. And, and repeat your name again.
My name is Roz.
What's your last name?
My last name is Newley.
Newley, okay.
Roz Newley.
Okay.
I work for, for Billabore as a federal government employee, recipient of Purple Heart by former Defense Secretary Donald Rumsfeld, due to my dedication and mission accomplishment in the past 10 years overseas. I'm here to acknowledge one thing, that as I mentioned, I don't disagree with these folks because I don't live here. Their concern is supposed to become, should come under consideration. But in the meantime, I believe, you know, the state of art and spotless meat processing unit brings incredible job opportunity here. We facilitate the neighborhood and it will be absolutely, the way, you know, they addressed it, I believe everything is hygienic, as you mentioned, as you saw everything there. So I hope you reconsider, you know, allowing this process, meat processing in this neighborhood. That would be a wonderful opportunity, especially when it comes to job employment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world tonight like to speak? Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight on this issue? All right, since we have no one else that wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. All right, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for this consideration. Thank you all for coming out. I think basically we've addressed most of the concerns, the odor, maybe not the traffic completely. So put a traffic restriction on it. The, we know the road accommodates a school bus terminal. Our trucks, I don't believe, will be much bigger than a school bus. The, Denios Retail. This is 24 acres. And the man that I'm representing is a man of integrity. And if he tells you that it's no odor, there will be no odor. He's paying a very expensive machine like Omega has done. I think this, this council has done a lot of work with Omega to keep the smell down. It has. They've installed certain devices that has helped a great deal. It's certainly not what it was 15, 20 years ago. They, we are installing a very similar system in the mobile meat processing unit. The other concern I would like to point out is, this is at the very back of this 24 acres. It, it's not up on the road. It's, it's hardly visible once you get it back there. From certain perspectives, some people, the neighbors can't even see it. But when he gets his house built in front of it, you won't be able to see it at all. I mean, the house will basically block it. So I, I, that will, he needs time to build his house. But he's got to find some, some kind of way to make money to move here. And, and that's what he's come up with. We are willing to do restrictions, whatever you want us to do. If, if the thing smells, if it does something like that, close us down. You know, but don't deny us the, the right to do it. You have the ability and put it in the conditional use permit. If these conditions are not followed, you will be closed down.
All right, quiet, please.
The, we did have some applause for outside, didn't we? And I'm telling you, this, this will be an asset to this community. Y'all will be buying cheap meat and good meat from this facility if we have to put the facility, the retail facility in tomorrow. But it, it's not going to smell. Now, I don't really know what to say about the fear of the noise, other than the animal will not be slaughtered outside. The animal will be in a basically soundproof environment inside and I don't think you will hear one scream of the animal dying. I don't think that's a real concern. Your fears are unfounded. I said the traffic, limit it to, limit it to two, three trucks, uh, trucks a day. And move the, the retail store somewhere else. So we can control that. Put, put a, put a restriction in a conditional use permit that we can only have two, three deliveries a day. And maybe two outgoing trips a day. We, we can handle that. It is a farming community and this is something that's really associated with the farm. And, and it's, and it will be an asset to the community. It will not be a deduction from the community. It will, it will bring jobs to your community. I think Mr. Wood has already talked to one fellow that he could hire, early to the community. He's not here tonight. But I just ask you to not to deny it, but put conditions on it. Conditions that will satisfy the fears of these folks. And I just appreciate your attention, appreciate your review of all the packages that we've sent you. It will be an economic boom and an income-producing asset for this company and a great family, community to come. Thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you. All right, public hearing is closed. Does the board members have any other questions or comments? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
This motion is made in due consideration of public health and safety and general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and in the exercise of good zoning practices in pursuit of the body's statutory authority, that this conditional use permit not be approved.
All right, I have a motion to have second.
Second. Mr. Long got it first.
All right. And a motion second. Is there any other discussion?
You know, the, the biggest concern I have is this. And I appreciate, appreciate what you said. But there's so many citizens that I have to run across just about every day, you know? And you have to protect your people. And these people have a big concern. You know, when I became a board member, I said I would be with the citizens, you know, and stand up, stand up for them, protect their health. And they're concerned about their health. And I can understand that. I'm going to have to vote against it, I, because they're concerned about their health, liver conditions. It's not built for the traffic in that area, you know? And we do need the jobs. And we need the income. But it's the wrong place, you know? It's the wrong place. And that's, that's my reason not to approve.
I, I have a couple thoughts on this. And I appreciate everybody's concerns, all very credible. But I would be concerned about putting a facility in that particular location because it looks like the county and the state's infrastructure won't support it very well. And ultimately, I think the county would end up having to foot the bill for any accommodations that would have to be made from an infrastructure perspective. And we're not prepared for that.
I hate losing the business.
Right.
I do, too. I do, too. And if any, you know, if you look at this, a good thing out of this is, it's, it's good to see a community come together and support one another. But also, communities outside of the Fruit Plain area has come together to support a small community.
Absolutely.
I would love to see this business in the county. I would love to see it relocated. But I think it's doable.
I believe it, yes, absolutely.
Going to the right place.
There, I just don't want to see, you know, a $2 million bill for things that need to be put there. And we would have to pay for that, not him.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I want to thank you for your service. And frankly, that's irrelevant to this discussion. We're, this is not a question of who is a patriot, who is a veteran. We have Navy veterans. We had one who served in Desert Storm, was wounded. Again, thank you for your service. I'm glad anybody who supports this country by putting their life and liberty on the line. But that's irrelevant to this issue. Obviously, I'm familiar with this area because like my former work, I used to be a juvenile probation officer and I had a few people in the trailer court and a few others nearby. So I'm familiar with this area. But from one of the pieces of zoning we look at, it's one of the things called coming to the nuisance. But in this case, this is bringing the nuisance to the neighborhood. If the project was there, then people tried to come in, they wanted to pose an expansion, they can't do that. It's like, you know, Fish Factory's been there since a long time. It's there, it's that. But again, it's Mr. Newley, I'll commend him for one thing, is this is a connected to the farming industry. So I'm not opposed to a slaughterhouse, or what's the actual word we use, starts with the A, I can't even, abattoir, had to learn how to pronounce it and I still didn't. So it is part of our farming community. If you look on our seal, we include farming. So it is part of that. But there is one thing in real estate, location, location, location. This is the wrong location for this. And there is a slaughterhouse in Lancaster County, Northern Neck Meat Processing. I called and talked to the gentleman today. They were within one week of getting a USDA certification. But then something called COVID came along. So they are a custom business and they sell it locally. And I've attended the Fairfield Slaughter Department, they have their steak dinner, nice big steaks. So it's, and I ain't dying from it, as you can tell. But again, it's the question of location.
Right.
Whether somebody wants on 360, who's one of the names been mentioned here, that's up to you. But the Northern Neck Meat Processing is on Cortez Road, which is a primary road. It's small, windy, I'm not saying it's not, but it is a primary road. And if you look, there are not hardly any houses in the area. Miss Gimmon's not that far away, but I have not read, since it's not in Mothoma County, I don't hear, but I haven't read anything in papers about concerns of any of these things. They only do slaughtering pigs, cattle, sheep, et cetera, from February to October. Then they close down and do deer and other stuff. And part of what they do is for hunters for the hungry. So, but again, they could get it. But the other thing is the Amish question. That is a valid concern. Cause on Route 3- Cause on Route 3, it's around Warsaw, and I may have been on the four-lane highway, they had a collision with an Amish buggy, and two people got flown out by helicopter, that's serious. The problem is, on a small road like this, you come around one of these turns, and you get on a buggy, you may not stop, and usually what happens is there are serious injuries to the people, and the horses have to get put down. You read the stories, just about every time a horse is put down. And one time, I was coming back on Route 3, right around Farina. And it was really thick, I'm not sure why they were there, but it was, it was darkish. And I didn't see it, and fortunately, it was raining, I was getting ready to pass. But I saw something and pulled over. If I hadn't done it, I would have smacked into one head-on. So I am very concerned about that. But it's the location of the proposal is wrong. And whether any of the concerns people have expressed, it's the fear of the unknown that they are concerned about the greatest. And it looks like a very antiseptic system, and it may very well be. But again, it could be put somewhere else, and frankly, it does not have to be an industrial. We don't have any real industrial-owned property in this county. It could be in another area that is own agriculture, still have to go through the same process. But look at the area, how many other people are around it and are used to it? Again, as Snippy said, Thomas Huddon, a lot of people years ago killed a lot of pig around here. And they weren't in antiseptic stuff. So again, it's a good project, but in the wrong location. And that's my reason for denial. Again, I'm not opposed to it elsewhere in the county. In a vacuum, that is.
I, I think a little bit higher elevation, we don't have a whole lot of elevation, but a little bit higher elevation from a ground perspective would be a better location. From an engineering perspective, I'm kinda bent in engineering.
Not, not a whole lot of people.
Yeah.
All right. I gotta agree with the comments of my fellow supervisors. It is a residential area. I gotta think about those residents. I know probably 50, 60% of y'all in there. Known y'all for years. You have to think about the people of the community. And I would like to see some more business here. And I know this man will probably do the best he can, but it just looks like the residents don't want it. Yes, I understand that, sir. Now, the public hearing has been closed. All right. Any other comments from the board? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say aye. All right. The motion passes. I'm sorry, sir, but your application has been denied. All right.
Does, were people notified about the quarter project being tabled? We didn't do it before we started.
We didn't do it before we started. All right, let's give them a minute, get out of here. Cause we can't carry on with this. Now I might have to wear this, I think.
You didn't wear it before.
And it quieted down. We haven't finished yet. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we still, we still have a meeting going on. So if you're gonna leave, please do it quickly, please. And please be quiet. All right. The next item on our list is we need to go into a closed meeting.
Just for one, I don't know if anybody is here for the public hearing, but the one for the new office complex for the campground was tabled to next month.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tadlock.
At 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, thank you.
All right, I'll let you take care of the wording we need to go into closed meeting.
I need a motion by the board of supervisors that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 3711A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, and Section 2.2, 3711A3, for the discussion or consideration of the potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the potential disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
All right, you have a motion?
I'm sorry. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary to the county administrator, as assistant county administrator and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary in their presence, where reasonably aid the board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section 2.2, 3712F.
What about the chief of EMS? I see Cal went back there.
If, if you would like to have him come in.
If he's gonna speak, he needs to be included in that motion.
And the chief of emergency services as well, if the board wishes to do so.
Yep. We can't call him in afterwards if we haven't included him in there. To be safe.
All right, Tom?
So what Mr. Tedlock read.
All right, and I have a second, sir. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will go into closed meeting. Thank you, Johnny.
I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify of a roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And as were identified in the motion convening, the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
I move with Mr. Tedlock read.
All right, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Got a second? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Long? Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Tong? Haney votes aye. All right. Anything we need to do, or?
If the board so chooses, I need two motions. One, of the hiring of the assistant chief, if the board wished to do so. And then I need, if the board moves forward with that, I need the supplemental appropriation for the salary and the benefits of that.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we hire Ethan Harding as the assistant EMS chief at the salary of...
$71,500.
$71,500.
All right, we got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion, a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against, say aye. All right.
And then as far as the supplemental appropriation to the salary line item and the benefits, it totals $42,377.39, and that's for the six-month period from January 1 to June 30.
So moved.
Second.
See, we're getting better at this.
All right, got a motion, a second?
Getting late.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we carry over to...
You got other business?
No, carry over.
Carry over.
Oh, carry over?
Move that November the 30th at 5:30 PM for the joint meeting with the school board and the board of supervisors, here in this building.
All right. Got a motion, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming.